I'll call the regional school district thirteen board of education special work session at March twelfth twenty twenty five at five four nine.
The United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The agenda very much improved. I was in favor. You posed. Um, public comment, do you have any public comment on the budget discussion? Okay, you're there. So if he's a panelist, he can just unmute, correct?
Okay, can you hear me now?
The voice of God up there, Chuck.
The voice of God. I have a letter from Brendan Ray. I'd like to read into the record.
Perfect. I was gonna read it. So if you're gonna read it.
You're you're right there. It'll be clear if you read it.
Ironically, I think it might be clearer if you read.
Yeah, right.
I can start, Chuck, um. You know, after we can always come back, more public comment for this six o'clock meeting. Um, purpose purpose of tonight is want to get the members of the finance committee that we we could get here along with our board members go over some of the questions from the finance committee. And any other questions that are in budget documents, just to get some more clarification publicly before we start to make some possible changes on the twenty sixth. You know, we, if necessarily, could make some adjustments to the agendas at six o'clock if we wanted to make any changes, but suggest we digest any changes we want. Like and bring ones back to the twenty sixth. Some time to digest it. We did receive a letter from Brendan Ray, the first selectman from Durham. And Chuck, if you want to read that one, it would be great.
Okay, uh, I will read it. Um, Dear Mr. Delheimer and members of the Board of Education, I hope this message finds you well. I am reaching out to discuss a pressing issue regarding the financial challenges our town is currently facing for fiscal year twenty twenty five dash twenty twenty six and the impact of the educational budget. The Board of Selectmen's preliminary fiscal year twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six budgetary expenditures to date have increased by approximately six hundred ninety two thousand dollars after major reductions. Compounding this issue, the town is experiencing a significant decline in revenue. The decline is likely to worsen due to the municipal spending cap that is calculated on the town's adopted general fund and educational budget. If the increase in expenditures are above a cap of two point five percent or the rate of inflation three point three one percent of the previous fiscal year's expenditures, the town's municipal revenue sharing grant will see a reduction equal to fifty cents on every dollar. Last fiscal year, the cap was exceeded. Additionally, our adjusted twenty twenty three and twenty twenty four grand list have decreased, further straining our financial resources. In order to keep the mill rate manageable for our residents, our town has made sacrifices, particularly in terms of capital expenditures. Unfortunately, this has resulted in a lack of investment in our town buildings, infrastructure projects, vehicles, and equipment replacement and personnel. The proposed budget for District thirteen is alarming as it includes an increase of one million four hundred and thirty six thousand three hundred and sixteen dollars for the town's share of the regional school budget. Coupled with a stagnant state educational share grant, this would push the RSD thirteen portion of the mill rate up two point one eight mills. Despite our efforts over the past two years to supplement the town's budget with undesignated funds to maintain stability, the town's portion of the fiscal year twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six increase would be one point four three mills, bringing a raise in the overall town mill rate from thirty five point seven to thirty nine point two nine. Given these circumstances, we are making every effort to cut our budget and we urgently implore the school district to consider similar measures. It is critical that we work together to ensure financial stability for both our town and the school district. I am requesting this correspondence be read into the record of your March twelfth meeting for the Board of Education consideration. I look forward to discussing this further and exploring potential solutions together. Thank you for your attention to this matter. Signed, Brendan Ray, First Selectman, Town of Durham.
Much appreciated. And Chuck, feel free to stay unmuted. We can hear you obviously very clear at all times. You know, it might be a good time to start if we're starting from the town side. If there's any anything from that letter or anything from the towns that I know Nick had put some questions in the document. I didn't know if you had any concerns or if you want to wait and see if things can come up.
I don't have anybody actually back here. I have mine here. You want to hear them now?
Yeah, of course.
Okay, so this is actually, I guess, kind of coming from the town because it's not coming from the educational side. So, um, and I have spoken with a lot of people. So our budget in two thousand and sixteen was thirty seven million, thirty seven point five. Um, it was thirty seven flat in twenty two. And in twenty three, it went up to thirty seven nine, and now we're at, you know, forty two nine, forty three. So, and we've had less kids. So that's that's just known fact that our budget's gone up that much. So it's obviously, you know, the the number and the with less students, I would think the numbers teachers in the classroom probably would have gone down over that ten year period. Don't have those facts in front of them. But it's that, it's it's what's hitting the town as being most concerning when they've been evaluating it. Um, so when you look at the number, um, and I think it came up in one of the meetings when they were talking about the administrators and moving shifting the administrator from Memorial over to Strong and thus not reducing an administrator that's still admin in the budget. And when you do look at, once again, can't speak to this, not my area of specialty, but the number of administrators in special ed would have it seem to me and to others that are looking at it that they're in the administrative side and less in the on care, so to speak, directly dealing with the individuals side, and that's just looking at the board chart. So it's all under the superintendent um, as opposed to under the um, under the individual schools where they'd be getting hands on um, support. Um, and with that, the number of individuals or the number of teachers that are located at the school to provide assistance with the educational process that may not be the normal teachers is doesn't seem like that's growing. It just seems like that's pretty stagnant. So I think all in all, everybody's feeling that it's there's like a kind of a cross spread, and I'm saying this once again because it may come off the conversation, that there's a lot of name changes, you know, calling it one, you know, calling it um, some name for the individual that may be coming in versus somebody that may be going out, and I think it was I don't, I have my notes there, but and and the name changes are confusing people because nobody really knows, is it a district teacher? Is it a is it a leader of a department? You know, versus what they may have been called in the past, and there's like a name flop. And nobody's really understanding kind of what they're doing. Um, and that's confusing people and leading to more people getting angst out in in the uh, in the world. And once again, speaking from a private person, I don't know anything about the educational process in terms of what the new labels are for people um, versus what they may do. Um, but, you know, once again, we do have two individuals coming in um, into the administrative system that are now with a different label that nobody really understands what their goal is. So I think if it's gonna go, you're gonna have to kind of come up with a clear presentation that kind of explains what the roles and purpose and meaning is. Because obviously, our huge cost right now, I see, is in south, obviously, as you say it in your summary salaries benefits. And then uh, it transportation is 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 the other one that's killing, so. Um, and I don't think there's anything you can do about that.
I'm clarifying, I mean, so there's, if I'm right, there's not two addition of administrators, there's that there's one, and then one is a two under the teacher's union contract. I mean, are referring to the climate specialists is under the.
Oh, yes, yes.
And then the assistant principal position.
But I thought. We have the special, we have another special ed person coming in, I assume, and then the climate specialist.
Not the teacher.
Special ed teacher.
Both teachers.
And that's due to statutory obligations for. And it was a need for the district to add another special teacher. So that's not that, and that's just.
So what area are they in, in the in the board chart?
So that's our organization. So what we're, what it would look like would just be another special education teacher at Strong. So those are not what it would look like until we have asked them.
And the climate specialist would also be at, well, actually, I know that located at Strong as well. So the the question that we're speaking to was everybody was saying to me, and I kind of tried to explain it, what the climate specialist is kind of a fancy name. So obviously, in the educational field, I'm sure it's it's well known. In the real world, it it nobody really understands what that means. And understanding that we need more individuals in the special ed, and obviously, I can get back and say, well, this is is needed at Strong School. And it's obviously dealt with there, but you still have a lot of administrators under the and how much does these administrators obviously help the special ed teachers, but there is a very many special ed teachers, so it's almost more admin than special ed teachers. And I know I'm not one for one, but that's the administrative cost is what people are focused on right now is what my my point is trying to get to. And it's it's pretty clear that we're that if we look at over ten years, it didn't top up until four years ago that the budget just kind of went spiraling. And I don't think that was I don't think it was people, but I don't.
I can say that. Uh, so there were years back when specifically nineteen twenty, actually even nineteen nineteen, but there used to be a more robust fund balance in this district. Um, and the Board of Education's directive was to use that uh, fund balance down. So we were able to use that fund balance to lower the budgets in years of nineteen twenty. We had a significant surplus through COVID. We weren't be able to, we weren't using our buses, so we got credit back. We weren't able to have a lot of our activities, our sporting events, so we created, we incurred a large surplus. We applied that to the following year's budget. Typical fashion was to apply it to the next year. That had always been a process, but you can apply it to the immediate next year as well. So we did that to keep the budget down. And then we had another surplus in the next year. We used that one as well. So we've been using our certain immediate surpluses to offset the budget as well as we did the um, fund balance. Well, we're out of those, we're out of those options at this point, so that's why this all has, there's not enough to offset. It's.
So from the years you're talking about, she now kind of justifies Kim's point where we went from thirty nine to forty three.
Maybe that's how it gets presented. This is the actual budget. This is what Fund Balance used, which is what she's talking about, and and this is what we actually went to the taxpayers with. So that doesn't show as flat for eight years and then spiking as as the student population is going down.
It was flat for eight years because of the situation because we closed and we moved school. And that produced about a million dollars in savings that was scattered over, you know, just over the years, so. Uh, it's safe, but then we had the COVID. It's money there, we also fund balance. There's lots of recent plans that we also went a lot of the budget, spent money in capital. We could only use one percent of our budget capital around to like three years or so. You know, a lot of things aren't done. But now we now you'll see there's two percent of the budget for capital. And we got really far behind. Uh, that's a lot of increases in the last two years, it goes down. This is the country. We also use some bonding back in two thousand eighteen seventeen. There's lots of fiscal reasons. Also, on page twenty five in the budget, it shows that there's a back production of five positions. Uh, and the increase in three, that there are increases.
So that reads to, once again, special ed getting more and the individual is getting less, and that's why you're getting the questions on the class size is coming up. Because everyone's believing that the class sizes are falling up, which I know they're not. I think that's why you're saying. The the reductions are in the are in K two six, so everybody's asking that your class sizes must be changing. That's why that.
No, it's just that there's a bubble of how many kids are in that grade.
Understand.
We've said it a few times in meetings, but a few times.
And that's why you're also getting the question that the nurse is going away and everything else, but the principal is still coming. So that's why you're getting those questions because it's how they're perceive, everybody's perceiving them when they're reading this. Um, and I hate to say it that way, but that's been, our district has always said that, that we always have the individuals that are going to school and and getting their education have to get it from that one teacher. Um, because everything else is is evolving around um, the other services that have to be provided. So it's always been a point of concern for individuals. When you're saying individuals, do you mean students? Students, okay. So if you're number twenty three in the classroom and you need a little bit of help, that's what the that's what the individuals are concerned that is that number twenty three person in a class of twenty six getting the help that they need. And are we supporting?
Is that following instructions? Is that what their roles? Instruction.
Interference.
Yeah, yeah, if you need extra help in math, but you're not on the on this.
Right.
We don't have the form that allows.
I mean, I can see the confusion in the organizational chart and things like that. And we we maybe we could do a little bit of a better job about laying it out, but to Kim's point, that's not gonna, we're not gonna know what that is until the budget passes.
Yeah, because if we want to do that, and everyone say we already made up.
I mean, so.
We could do it, we could technically just do that.
I mean, moving forward, once it's done, and so people understand where everybody is and why they're there. I mean, if there's questions about that, I mean, I'm just.
Well, it's just not even that, too. I mean, the organization charts don't really explain. A lot of our related arts, P E are music are are split. There's point four in one school, point six in another school, so it's hard to explain it in an in an org chart without really without really knowing.
There could be a link to like a a job description for Kevin, maybe something like that, like, okay, quick, God, if you want to find out what they're responsible for. Yeah. Just on a on a high level basis, it's it's much cheaper for us to educate special education students in-house than than out. Hundred percent. So that's one of the reasons why the budget.
And again, our percentage is up because our student population is down, so then, you know, it goes by percentages, so assuming she can start with declining enrollment, we don't have, you know, and especially I've never is high, but it's high because you know, generally enrollment, but not necessarily special.
It's not unique to this district. All districts are pretty soon.
Correct.
To the how the the caseload for people, it's it's going everywhere.
I mean.
No, but I should say.
Kim and I were in day on the hill today, talking to a bunch of legislators, and we sat down with the region four and Westbrook. Westbrook Superintendent, we gave an interview for CBS on how this is all affecting regional districts and smaller districts and and how we can't get lost in the shuffle of funding. Because when it comes down to it, you know, I said at last meeting, we say we're getting forty million from the state. People say, oh, it's great. How much are we gonna get? Maybe hundred and twenty two, hundred and twenty two, and even that, we've already budgeted for that. That's just a.
You save one twenty two?
Yes.
So that's what we're then I thought just from this morning.
We're gonna get that in twenty five. If this is nothing in twenty six, then uh, forty million more for twenty seven, which we don't even know how we'll get that to access.
Rather than making it the same number for each student throughout the whole state, they just arbitrarily give money to wherever they think they need.
And the representative was on the special committee for this whole situation.
She's a former special ed teacher. I worked.
Yeah, she was phenomenal today. She gave us a really good, you know, indication that they understand twenty twenty six isn't talked about. It's it's someone had brought up that twenty twenty seven was when it was gonna be funded. So I I do think she's going to listen. I think the committee is a really empathetic committee, and I think they truly do care and want to find ways for everybody to make sure that they're getting what they need. It doesn't seem like they put the committee together, put it together. It seems like they really do truly care. I thought it was pretty hard to know.
The issue is having my entire business in grant funded agencies. The it's it's a mess out there right now, and there is no money to be had. So, and I don't see that getting, I think this is gonna be our best year right now. And then it's gonna keep getting worse, because I think it will be funded this year. But everybody's coming off of a lot of free money. And everybody's just expecting that to be equally funded, level funding. And and the hands out there are are men. Every agency is up at the Capitol fighting, fighting, so. And if the feds do come in, you're they're speaking to me, and that's gonna you know, the state doesn't really have the money, to be honest.
Hey, um, Chuck, if you can carry, do you know what the um, the range or the number of the undesigned funds for Durham is? I got Middlefields today, but I I didn't have time. I was trying to look for Durham.
Money we how much money we have?
Yeah.
Give me a moment. I get pull my last thought.
Does it seem, some of the statute, it seems like it's it's hard to tell what is recommended for towns um, and what, whether it's like a recommendation for bonding or if it's a recommendation for what they feel comfortable with.
We never could find a clear recommendation. We found several. And we are over seventeen percent.
Well, yeah. And that's undesigned reserve seventeen percent?
They're over seventeen.
Wow. Bill Bill feels about fifteen as well.
I think it's a little bit. Okay. I wasn't sure. Thanks, Chuck.
The other thing that I think you probably need to stress is still the cost per student, and I know every time I'm asking that question, it's all because regional is different than um, if you're non-regional. Um, I really think you should probably play it up against the regionals and just see the cost per student for the regionals to kind of show that you're in line in your presentation.
We can make sure it's highlighted. It is in the book. We'll make sure we highlight it. You know, and I I think a lot of, I had talked to um Jim Mertnelli from um, Chuck and General Durham's Board of Finance, talked for a while yesterday and looking, looking at those numbers, like it's it's very hard, like the amount of capital improvements that these towns have going on, it'll take a part of that they're trying to build the building for. And it it's hard for them to save. They put off capital improvements. There's also not, the tax base is just not coming in. You know, there's not as many businesses in the towns. It's not as robust as just the other places. And it's 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 gonna be a tough year for them. I I I think we need to be empathetic to that and do as much as we can. I think the frustration is that the plan amendments passed and we're building the building. And the construction. So that we automatically, as a community, think, all right, now we can slash the budget, you know, we can do that, but we we won't see the realization that the building is actually built and occupied, and then the other buildings could be closed.
You know, and going back to Bob's point, the corn school was agile for so many years because the budget never went down. And everybody was expecting the budget to go down and it always kind of stayed flat. Because everybody was assuming the creeping the benefits from the corn school closure would pause that, so. I mean, I think.
And sixteen seventeen.
This is why we started these discussions four years ago. We first came on here to say that in order for us to be fiscally responsible within this region, we needed to make sure that the amount of pupils we had and the schools that we needed to close and why Memorial needed to be done is because we knew we were gonna be coming into this this upcoming year and with the years coming along. So it's been a discussion that's been had for three, four years about why we wanted to do what we were doing in order for us to get some cost savings going forward. I mean, and I'm not looking to be argumentative. It is not something that is new to everybody. This is exactly why we wanted to go to a three school system. And, you know, we we live in two towns that do not draw any economic development because we are two small communities that want to stay farm, community based. I get all that. But in the same token, I think this board, and the only reason why I'm being defensive about it is because we talk about it all the time. I think this board has been very fiscally responsible, and unfortunately, this year is probably gonna be a tough year because of insurance has gone up. Collective bargaining wages went up, you know. And this is gonna be a transition. The next two years are gonna be transitional periods until that project is done, and then hopefully, we're gonna start seeing some savings because now we have the right number of schools for the right number of kids. It's gonna be tough. We get it. We get the full talents have issues. We all need to do our fair part. I get it, but I think everyone needs to understand that, and I think that we kind of get away from that. And when people come to our meetings and are not educated in the sense that they don't listen to what we've been saying, it gets really frustrating on everybody's part to to say that we're not doing something, not saying that that's what you're saying. But that's, I know the general consensus of about fifty, sixty people will come and and be argumentative about. So I want to put that out there. Be easily changed.
Right, but it's important to recognize that our knowledge, even though we've said it numerous times, you know, it's not, it's not, it's not reaching everybody, so.
That is not the fault of this board.
No, I'm I'm not saying, I'm just saying, you know, there are certain things we can tweak to be able to reinforce.
We have been probably more so than ever because I've been here since twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen. All I'm saying is is that this board and this group of individuals, when it comes to all of our boards, have not been more transparent and open about what's been going on. Whether you listen to it and actively are being part of it, you need to be able to do that to understand what's fully going on. This is not pretty, and it's not going to be pretty. We understand that. But there's reasons why it's not pretty right now. And that's all I'm trying to put out there. Like I said, I'm not trying to be argumentative. I'm just trying to make sure people are educated about, I mean, they say this all the time, ignorance of the law is not a defense. Ignorance of information is not a defense. What I'm saying is you need to be informed in order to have an argument, is what I'm saying.
So do you, do you have an idea of how like what people are looking for in terms of getting information? Like, we talk about it all the time. Like, what is the best way to get all of that out there?
I just, I mean, I was speaking of it for the budget presentation. Um, I I'm thinking a bit more from the from the presentations that go out. There's no, I mean, I was here speaking, you know, back when we were trying to sell the three schools, and I said, getting the information out is very, very important. People don't read a lot. They just talk. And that's what's the problem with a small town. It's not like, yeah, how many people do you have listening on on your, you know, when you're kind of sitting there, I'm I'm. yeah, how many people do you have listening, on, on your, you know, when you're kind of sitting there, I'm, I'm, there's three of us, usually, and I, you know, I'm just sitting at my office listening to it, so, um, it's not like they're getting all the full information, what they're seeing is, you know, oh, we're losing a couple, you know, we're losing grade, you know, of three teachers, that's what they said. Well, what they're saying, oh, it's going up over five percent, that's crazy, you know, oh, and this is the top of the, you know, it's everything's going, and then it just spirals. So how you present is all I'm really kind of saying, and I'm suggesting if the budget did go down with form closing, that that comes out loud and clear, you look at the ten-year history, and you kind of show that in a presentation. People still do believe that time, time, it's, I don't have anything in it, there's never anything in it, I, I don't know where they get their articles from, but.
They're not even delivering it, but delivering it through a, um, delivery agency, they said that the post, it was too expensive to send it through the post office, so it's just getting sent to people's lawns, like.
It's getting thrown out.
I was wondering about that, so.
Yeah, I went by one that was an intrigue on my way over today, I was like, I like it. It's a creation, at least it's not on the ground littering.
I, I think what people that I've spoken to have, have struggled with is that the, the point you bring up was just. And that has a direct impact on the FTE, teachers' person, uh, for example, but everybody's talks to me about the increase in administrative costs that, I guess, district services, is that what it's called? Central services, it, it still keeps going up, and I don't know if that special ed is in that particular department, or whether it's unit by itself. But it, it just seems to, it just seems to go up without explanation, enrollment's coming down, and people are trying to rationalize.
And that's all tied to the administrative department, so there's really, I mean, without cutting positions, there's no way to lower lower that cost at that point, the only way is through attrition, and being able to do a value order if you, if you're cutting positions, otherwise, um, it's tied to the, the ministry or community.
No, I, I get the contractual applications, I guess people are focusing on whether or not if people there, you know, that's the people that are in the schools. That's the, that's the, that's the question that I, I keep getting, is why administrative costs keep going up? And the school population keeps.
I mean, same as me, we're just messengers.
I don't expect an answer right now, but that's what we're.
Well, we want to remember is that the student enrollment goes down, it doesn't go down in one particular school or in one particular grade, it's spread across, you know, thirteen grades, and so, um, it, it doesn't usually end up that you can cut a teacher or, um, computer position in that regard.
Yeah, I, I don't, I don't know that the, the general population's focused on teacher cuts, I think they're more focused on, why is the administration process still going up? When we have to cut.
That's, uh, negotiations for administrators. There are actually, and these were not new employees, but new bargaining unit members in the, in the administration um, that did not have, um, were not in the union before, and like, say, for example, like, Dr. Wilson, the teacher then had to come into the, uh, administrator's year. So what you're probably seeing are shifts of like reallocating, uh, there hasn't been any new administrators um, in the last three years, um, but they were reclassified, remember, Lindsay, they, and by state statutes, we had to put in there, they were doing a value.
Right, if they had this, yeah, if the athletic director had the certification and/or the, um, degree.
No, it was done last year.
Yes, yes.
And so that, and so that does look like.
Not increased, but it was not new people. And I can see how you would know that from just the numbers.
There's also, you know, there are K to, or K to five or six, and one that is pretty steady, it's not that dropping like the whole split, so. You know, the, the reduction on who is in the ten, eight, twelve. Um, so you look at the enrollment and the, the base, you look at the life giving, so there's really not much change in the, you know, the, the planning for the, 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 the race course.
And that's, there's not a big change from when the study was done either?
Uh, it's, it's.
So we always planned on not having a reduction in K through five at this point.
No, I know what you said, I mean, there has been, I know what you're trying to ask.
Yeah, I, I just want.
So there, so our ten-year proj, our ten-year projection has reduced the number of kids that are here, it's, yes. But, so I don't understand.
But when you say the K to five.
It's, yeah, we, we've been level, level at.
Yeah, it's not been significant, but there's.
It's like Dr. Charles said, because there's not enough kids per grade, you can't lose a teacher. It's like, right now, I know, because my son is, it's the first grade class going into second grade, right now, there's like sixteen kids per class. We couldn't cut one, because if we cut one, we actually went over the number. Next year, because second grade, there's a little bit higher of a threshold on what we're allowed, that's why they're able to lose a second grade teacher.
Yeah, the bubble blues for each grade.
Right.
You, you, sometimes you essentially have to lose twenty-three kids in a grade to be able to lose the takeaway from that teacher.
That's always, that's always.
Yeah.
And, you know, even create the enrollment decline, it's always a couple of people pushing the wall. Always that question, if there's twenty-six, can we do twenty-six and not twenty-five, I mean, that's a long, lifelong question.
And I, and I, I don't hear a lot of, let's cut more teachers these days.
You know, I don't either.
The question I, that I hear about is, okay, have we ever cut anybody in this country? So, I mean, that's not an answer for today, but that's a question I hear.
You know, I have some magic questions. I think you have me right now, or do you have your?
Well, did I assume everybody read the document?
Yeah.
Do I have to go over again, do it?
Unless the answer wasn't what you wanted.
I think we just talked about number one. Uh, the, the second question I had is, is with, with the, with the reduction of coaches with the uh, memorial and anticipate closure of the, of the other school, um, responses, coaches budgeted to follow teachers and students to the other building, so.
Know their instruction.
Instruction. Right. But, so there's, is there, is there coaches that just deal with teachers? Who's here?
Can you, can you answer that?
I'm not sure I understand the question, um, our, our coaches, we have coaches that support teacher implementation of curriculum, but um, there's instructional people that are actually coaching the, the students as well, and will be into the classrooms and, and supporting them. So, yeah, I know, our, our instructional coaches do support all of our teachers in the district, but they also do help to support the students when they can, if they're in the classroom. Um, but they, that's their main role, is to be, they help to analyze data, and to, yeah, to support the teachers with, um, helping them to really understand the curriculum, um, and how to implement the curriculum, they help to model for the teachers, um, with a lot of our curricular shifts, they, they're the ones who do a lot of the professional learning, because our staff members are tied with our students, so it's really hard to pull them from the kids to give them that direct PD, so instead, our coaches are the ones who are going out and getting that training, and then they're going in meeting with the teachers, providing that training, providing that support for them, um, they're, they're doing a lot of the testing, they're analyzing a lot of that data to have those conversations with the teachers, to be able to, um, look for what support the students need, um, and to identify whether or not our students need, you know, interventions for, or, and you talk about special ed, they have a lot of different roles, they also help to, um, develop curriculum for the district, um, so they're, they have, they wear a lot of very different hats, but their, their role is to support the, the teachers, kind of the way that.
In the process now, is one per building?
Yeah, it's about that, yes.
And it's about one per every two, two grade levels right now.
And so is, is it too early to talk about what happens when we consolidate those? Set down the road, talk about, yeah, I wanted to impart this budget, I would, that's.
Yeah, that's something we can talk.
I'll be, yeah.
I mean, there's certainly gonna be a reduction at some point somewhere.
But music and all the support services, they're also different, and there's a lot of, very, very. All the services will change.
But I think what they're saying is, it, it would be good for this, this upcoming year, not for the budget, to really sit down and, and work on what that might look like, you know, but I think that's also hard for a small district, you know, it's very hard to talk about positions without you know, signifying who those positions are, so it's, it's a gentle process, and it, it's, it can be messy, so that's maybe that's just.
Yeah, and I think the longer the runway you give people on potential job reductions, better off you go on.
I, I agree, and I think it brings up a good point about, like, when you talk about the community, and even just parents, like, parents have such a strong connection to the teachers. They work hand in hand in communication with them, and they don't have the instruction, they don't have the interaction, um, unless they're like having a sidebar conversation, so it's very hard, I think, for the community to justify having certain positions that they don't really have the connections to, so it might be something that we really need to have a community understanding with, what their roles are, and, and, and they're supporting their staff and their kids.
Yeah, I asked one other, I asked one other question before you, and this is more of just a concern, because it, and it happened, I'm not sure we're closing the budget, but it happened at one of the meetings, and you're speaking about new classes that are gonna be offered, and how the mix of the classes interact with the teachers, and I kind of, I was just a little concerned that if, if it really will unset smoothly, so if I'm a teacher and I have, you know, six courses that I teach, and now we're gonna interject three new courses, you're gonna be able to mix the teachers to the courses, so that you know, a business teacher that's already full, and now teach a new economics class, or a new sports management class, or whatever the class may be, or does that really cost um, in terms of the budget? And are all the other towns offering a, a huge array of courses, or is that really necessary for the overall education, you know, is it the number of classes, or is it that you teach what you teach and teach it well? This is just the one, but the, obviously, the budget impact is if you do get the number of students that want it, are we sure that we have the teacher to teach it, that's really the budget.
I mean, I think it's twofold, I think there's two parts of that, and, and you know, this conversation, I, I just actually have a Kim our Health and Human Services pathway, um, I'll send you, Westbrook has a good one of the models for these pathways, and it, it does keep kids in district that may go to career or technology schools that are regular, are regular ed, they have a hint of interest in, in tech, but maybe not enough to apply to a textbook, and you can often just pathways to give them some way to explore careers. Um, but it's hard in a regional district, and it's my district can do it, um, and even looking through the, the courses, as the pathway develops, we add to that. You know, there, there's some concern that we would have to add staff over that time, we were promising a pathway for, um, a course to be added, you know, so the kids are already in this pathway, and, and next year, can we guarantee that those kids can take that course, it's likely that it's gonna need another teacher that teaches it, if there's like less occasions, I just, I think it is something that.
But if Westbrook can do it, they're a small district, it's not like they're, you're not telling me that Rastafarians doing it, you're telling me Westbrook's doing it.
It's, it's at an infancy stage, it's the start of it, Westbrook's, I think, I'm not sure, I'm not sure if they're starting the pathways.
I haven't, it's been years.
It's been years, so they've done it over time, um, they've got some really great connections, they've got a lecture boat down there, and stuff. And they've kind of tailored it around the big areas of tech that they could have internships that, it's a little harder for us here, um, we're I, you know, I know we're working hard to make those connections with different agencies that can help with that. But it is something to talk about, you know, in, we're gonna build this building, and, and we whoever's on this board at that time's gonna have to say, we, we, we made a promise to make sure that the people and that it was within, you know, the guardrails of, of families being able to stay in district, and it's hard for us to say that we can promise these FTE additions for the pathway, as if it's going to interfere with the reduction based on moving to schools and building these new schools, I just, I think it's something in the back of everyone's head, that we really just need to think about some this year budget concern, but we need to think about the next few years.
It's just hard, and there's a lot of offerings to ever do it economically, that's just a hard push for.
Something that, like, to your point, I hear you, but student achievement is is asking a lot of questions about that, like, what does this look like now, what does this look like in two years, what does it look like in three years, and how do we, A, do this responsibly, and B, how do we do this so that the student interests are being met? Um, because that's the, that's the most important thing, right, to make sure that we have offerings available to our students that will make them excited about coming to school every day, and um, facilitate their learning, so that when they launch into the universe, or whatever that might be, whatever they might be doing, um, that they're not with success.
I mean, and there's also the remote learning, I don't know how much that's coming into play, but, you know, if, it is a course that has you know, not enough students, can you merge it with Westbrook and Madison and do it remotely, where you're kind of all in a classroom setting, learning all together, um, and doing it cheaper that way, and that's all. Um, others are doing, let's put it that way, I don't know about the, the public schools, but the privates are definitely doing that. Yes, this state, this state has a, a tone of regulations surrounding it, as it is.
Mm-hmm. And I do think we could probably sit here for hours and hours, instead of looking at all this stuff for hours, but I'd love to invite you guys to come to the meeting on the twenty-sixth. Maybe go through the last of the questions, I know the board's gonna have a lot of budgets, discussions and changes possibly for the twenty-sixth, I think.
And those are recommendations and potential voting on the twenty-sixth?
Yeah, yeah, and I, and I know, um, at, you know, at that time, we're willing to, you know, for a reduction in certain amount, if, if we feel that's necessary, um, or make some specific changes or, or cuts or additions in different line items. But I wanna make sure that we're moving in our administrators, and then I make sure I talk to Dr. Charles, and we get our recommendations, your wishes. I wanna be able to take a break, but I know next time.
No, I wondered if Chuck ever got back to us on the, on those, on balance.
It's greater than seventeen, it might be, might be a little bit more than that, but I don't have the, I don't have the latest audit.
Percentage or?
Percentage.
How many millions?
Seven.
So you have seven million in undesigned reserves right now?
Yes.
And what's the general purpose of that?
Those are general undesig, uh, uh, unspent funds that have built up through the years. Oops. Am I still on you, with you guys?
Yeah.
Yes.
And, and just one follow-up question is, how much did the town of Durham have to move into, uh, the budget last year to cover what they, what Brendan says in the letter is really.
I have that number in front of me, I'm sorry.
That's all right, we can get that, Chuck.
Great. Keep that. Three minutes, we'll find a break in, a few minutes later, um, once we return.
Second.
Sorry about. What was your favorite?
I.
Thank you guys for coming. Thanks, I'll come up the street and we can.
I did the briefing. I didn't see any. Do you have any changes, you know? We can leave them together. Um, like a motion to approve the Board of Education Retreat, January twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-five. Regular meeting, February twelfth, twenty twenty-five, and the work session, February twenty-sixth. Don't worry. Just a second. Any discussion, changes, corrections? Okay, all of them favor. You posed. We have seen. You have already on the floor. Um, presentation, we have our student representatives, uh, from Coggin Chog here and Stone.
I'm just going to introduce introduce these three lovely ladies this evening. Um, not only are they three absolutely lovely people from Coggin Chog, but they also are our valedictorian and our co-saluditorians, and that's why they're going to report tonight. So Annika Liss is our valedictorian. She'll be going first. Tessa Lucia and Paige Kalazewski are our co-saluditorians this evening.
Uh, hi, I'm Annika and I'm here to talk about uh music at Coggin Chog. Um, so in December, we had our Christmas concerts um for choir and band, which were a big success. Um, and then in January, we also had our jazz band and show choir concert. Um, oh, in December, we also had our green tree lighting, which is an awesome opportunity for the school band to connect with the community. Um, and then in January, we had six students attend the Southern Regional Music Festival, which is an audition-based festival. Um, so we had four people for bands, being myself, Bella Oakley, um, Julian Mears and Cole Wilson, and then two for chorus, Kailin Connell and Jenny Zachley. Uh, we also had three students audition for Allstate, which was really exciting. Um, and then upcoming events in, on the first weekend of April, we have um our musical, which this year is High School Musical. Um, so that involves both um chorus, a lot of members whom are singing in um the show, and then we also have pit orchestra. Um, yeah, so I hope to see you all there.
Uh, hi, my name is, oh, can you hear me? Can all the people on the internet hear me? Um, yeah, those two people that are watching this. No, um, sorry. So my name is Tessa Lucia and I'm going to be sharing about some student life happenings at CRHS. Um, recently, the National Honor Society put on a craft drive um for Smilo Cancer Hospital. Um, over Valentine's Day, the French Honor Society left positive heart messages on the lockers, um, just to, you know, spread some cheer around the school. And um last week, the seniors presented their capstone projects and participated in Niask um accreditation interviews. Uh, Mr. Coggin Chog is this Friday, who will be crowned. Um, apparently, a parent of one of our contestants gave a five hundred dollar check to their son's penny wars. Go outside and you can see who it is. Um, the Unified Prom is next Friday with several several other shoreline towns and followed by the Spring Semi Formal, which is next Saturday. So I don't think any of you should be at that, but um um, so long.
Uh, hi, I'm Paige Kalazewski and I'm going to be talking a little bit about our athletics here at Coggin Chog, specifically our winter sports, which are currently wrapping up their seasons. Um, this year, both our girls and boys hockey co-op teams ended the season with a record of four, fifteen and one. Uh, this was an exciting season for the boys as it was their very first season as a co-op team with all shoreline conference teams. Our robotics team, the Robo Devils, were seeded second at the FTC Connecticut State Championship. Um, and although they were eliminated in the playoff matches, they still advanced to the New England Championships, which will be held in April by earning the Think Award, which was given to them by the judges for the team's creative thinking during the engineering design process. The indoor track team also had a good season with many impressive individual performances. At shorelines, the boys and girls teams won fourth and fifth place respectively, with the girls four-by-four relay placing first. The four-by-four, which is made up of Estela Perez, Allison Booth, Kailin Connell and Jane Waterman, won third place at the Class S State Championship and will be going to Nationals later this March. Charlie Dallas had an incredible season for the boys team, winning first in both the three hundred and fifty-five hurdles at shorelines, qualifying for state open in both the six hundred and three hundred with second and third place finishes at states and winning first place in New England's in the six hundred, breaking the Coggin Chog six hundred meter record. Uh, boys' basketball went fifteen and five this season. They were seeded second at shorelines and were conference tournament semifinalists. They were also seeded sixth in states and made it to the quarterfinals. And finally, as many know, the girls' basketball team had an outstanding season with an overall record of seventeen and three. They were seeded number one in shorelines and number three in states, and they became shoreline champions when they beat Morgan for the first place win. And we're very proud of uh all the winter sports teams and their accomplishments.
Bob, I know you, I know you have some questions for them, Bob, so, or if not, somebody else will also. Come on. It's okay. Come on. Come on. Come on. So if you don't, you also have future plans and now you enjoy your plans.
Um, yeah, so next year I'm attending a four-year college. Um, I haven't committed yet. I'm still waiting here back from a few schools. Um, but I'll be double majoring in gender studies and creative writing. Um, and yeah, I've had a really good experience at Coggin Chog, um, especially in art department here. Mr. Brofley is amazing. Um, yeah.
Yes.
Um, yeah, no, I've had an awesome experience at the music department over the last few years. Yeah.
Um, I'm going to be um studying actuarial science uh at UConn, go Huskies, um, probably most likely. The past years of my life at Coggin Chog have made me excited for adulthood. And I'm glad that I have grown through these past years a lot, so. Yeah. Um, it's for the money.
Um, I am planning on majoring uh in health science and I am most likely going to UConn. I haven't like a hundred percent committed yet. Um, and I've definitely enjoyed my time at Coggin Chog. Um, I've been involved in like a lot of different things from sports to um, I do stage crew for the theater um department and I don't know, everything, clubs and activities. And um I think that they're all great and made me.
And I think that they're all great and made me a lot more connected to the school community, so. I've enjoyed them.
And the positive impact that you have on our school and our future, so thank you all very, very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Some little things for you, and there's a lovely cake over there, and I'll cut some pieces so that we make sure that so many cakes are.
It'll be a good time while we go over the leadership pipeline, we need some cakes. And take turns, so we know what we're missing from the table. Welcome, Mary, Mary Broder's here, she is here to talk to us about the leadership.
Thank you, let me extend Jack Reynolds's. Sorry, he's not here now, but he has participated in all the focus groups and will be here tomorrow. So he's been a great partner in doing this. I know you know that you have sought the input of the community through interviews, focus groups, and the survey conducted in February. The survey was available between February fourth and seventeenth, and we conducted twelve interviews and focus groups and talked to fifty-six individuals, including students, parents, teachers, administrators, other staff, town-elected officials, community members, and the Board of Education. So a total of a hundred and seventy-six people took the survey online. And I know that may not sound like a great number, but that's actually a decent showing. It's in a community of this size, it's pretty good. So if we go on, I'm on page three now, so you had a total of two hundred and thirty-two people participate, two hundred and thirty-two is, it's not a bad number. Fifty-six of those, again, were in interviews and focus groups, and you can see that included twelve administrators, eleven parents, eight of you, just three teachers taking part in the interviews, two and two sort of non-certified and support staff, two town board people, and eighteen students, so you see the eighteen students were your biggest group. And then there were a hundred and seventy-six who took the survey, and that's where you got more robust numbers, teachers and thirty-nine community residents, and that really speaks to the community's engagement in the schools, even though they don't have kids in the schools right now. You'll note that the total numbers there add up to a hundred and ninety-two, which is more than your one hundred and seventy-six, and that's because multiple people identify under more than one label. Okay? So what did we find? Bob, far and away, the strength that people spoke the most about was your dedicated and talented staff. With eighty-four mentions of them, they're considered dedicated and hardworking and knowledgeable. Many have been in the district for many years, which has fostered stability and strong relationships with students. They've brought passion for teaching and commitment to student well-being, which obviously is what it's all about. Fifty-five talked about a strong sense of community, that the community is close-knit and supportive, and families and staff work together to make sure the schools are welcoming and inclusive. There's a small-town feel with that personalized attention and a positive school culture. Forty-four talked about your strong academic programs, the personalized learning kids enjoy, and the extensive support services, and the focus on the whole child, ethical values, and an inclusive education, helping generate well-rounded students and enriching experiences. There were thirty mentions of the variety of extracurricular, and we just heard it from your students too, the extracurricular opportunities and clubs and all, and the sports facilities are a point of pride. There were twenty-five mentions of music and arts programs with that long history, to your point, Mr. Rohrabak, of strong music and arts programs, and many students go on to study in these fields at college level. There were twenty-six mentions of the small class sizes and personalized learning. And the educators coordinating across grades to make sure that it's a consistent learning experience for the students. There were fifteen mentions of your facilities and infrastructure improvements. People are pleased that the community is supporting the schools and willing to invest in education. There were fifteen who talked about parent involvement and support, saying parents are highly involved, and the strong PTO presence and active participation reflecting a commitment to student success. And finally, there were ten mentions of administrative leadership and the Board of Education, that you work well together, and that people believe that a strong and collaborative board, along with a superintendent who prioritizes student well-being, will be really important moving forward. So what challenges did we find? Now, you notice the numbers under the challenges are actually a lot smaller than the numbers under the strengths, which struck me as interesting. But it is a wide range of challenges. There were nineteen people who talked about the revolving door of superintendent, and the lack of a clear vision and the absence, in addition, the absence of a curriculum director has contributed to confusion and frustration and a decline in morale, and a breakdown in some trust between you and administrators and teachers and parents in the community. The absence of a clear strategic plan has led to disjointed decision-making. That has led, in some people's views, to the board overstepping a role a bit, sort of micromanaging, and people would also point out that that was probably that filling of void caused by a lack of some leadership. Freedom of information requests and social media battles have been eroding trust. And some administrators are viewed as unresponsive and reluctant to address issues in a timely manner. So they were really citing a need for stronger leadership, clearer policies, and better communication. There were sixteen who talked about your reconfiguration that probably doesn't come as a surprise to you, you've probably heard rumblings. There is, what was expressed was the former superintendent's restructuring efforts didn't have sufficient community buy-in, and that has exacerbated some tension. The relocation of students has met with some resistance with parents and staff being concerned about logistical challenges, the condition of Lyman, and the long-term viability of these changes. Some of your participants talked about the fact that these issues have been discussed for years and felt that this was the best available option. But there is still a sense out there that the options weren't sufficiently explored and that missed deadlines and unclear timelines for implementation have also added to the tensions there. There were fifteen who talked also, well, who talked about curriculum oversight. The lack of a centralized curriculum leader has meant that curriculum delivery has been inconsistent. There was mention of math being weak across grade levels, but that need for stronger curriculum support. Also mentioned in that category was hats and the integrated arts programs being diminished, that there was a sense that one strong academic and creative offerings are, have been reduced. Some teachers expressed feeling unsupported without a strong strategic plan guiding what they're doing. It's felt fragmented. And arts and music programs, again, there's a sense that there have been lost opportunities for students. There were fourteen mentions of communications and board relations, the divide between the school district and the broader community, decisions made without adequate community input, inconsistent messaging. And as you well know, social media have been, Facebook and all, particularly Facebook, have amplified that discontent with a small but vocal group of parents frequently challenging the board and administration. And again, that higher volume of, high volume of FOI requests, straining relationships and blocking down the system and increasing tension. The divide exists beyond school issues with that, this is true in many communities across the state with the broad political and ideological tensions shaping debates in communities. And that's definitely in evidence here as well. And there's frustration with how quickly issues escalate, and there's also a concern about kind of end-running people, not following chain of command, but going straight to the board and to the superintendent. Financial pressures are also complicating things with the reliance, as you know, on residential property taxes, especially in Durham, it's difficult to balance school funding with homeowners' financial realities. There were twelve mentions of student life and extracurriculars, and some of this was from students, but the lack of after-school opportunities at the middle school level was a concern. They, the kids were giving specific, you know, what they would like to see, like, they definitely wish we could play tennis, kind of thing, so they were pretty direct about what they wish were available. There were eleven mentions of school climate and culture and social issues, concern about student morale, behavior, social dynamics, equity concerns, episodes of racism and bigotry and hate crimes. Again, something we've seen ramp up across the state and country. There is, there was talk also about curriculum decisions leveling practices that make students feel judged. There are disparities in student experiences across schools. And then just five mentions of special ed and student support, but the high turnover in special ed teachers and the lack of structured support from administration concerns. And there was a sense that it's been difficult for the special ed teachers when the curriculum hasn't been sufficiently clear. So anyway, those are your big challenges. So what does this mean for your leadership going forward? What you'll see in the next two pages are directly from the survey and not from the focus groups, but the comments from the focus groups are woven into the final couple of pages. So what you'll see here is that the highest vote getter, and so what I've given you is both people's first choice for what they want to see in a new leader and the top three choices for each of these categories. Does that make sense to everybody? Okay. So twenty-three percent had their first choice. Does, for expertise in a superintendent is building and trusting relationships with students, staff, and community. Really important. That's also the top three choices. Figure as well, twenty-two, ninety-three percent. Second is communicates and collaborates effectively in school and in the community. Twenty-one percent first choice and eight, almost nineteen percent in top three. And then somebody who shares a district-wide vision of excellence and innovative instruction. I actually believe a lot of problems come about not having that in place. And you definitely need somebody who can help you do that. So that was nineteen point four percent of your participants had that as a first choice, and twelve percent had it as the topic, or in the top three. And then in terms of qualities, here, number one, the first choice was accessible, approachable, and visible in schools and community with twenty-seven percent valuing that. And twenty-four percent said keeping students' growth and well-being the primary focus is most important, and nineteen point seven percent had trustworthy, honest, and respectful. And then it's a big gap with all the other options. And so if you look at the top three, it switches a little with keeping student growth and well-being the primary focus as the top, which I love, I think that's definitely where it should be. And accessible is at sixteen percent, and then trustworthy, honest, and respectful is at fifteen percent. So obviously, all of these are really important characteristics, but this speaks to the priority. I'm surprised, in some communities, you'll see that number one is possesses strong budget and finance ability. And that speaks to where that district is at that point in time. So you'll see, so what people want to see in your new leader is somebody who builds trust by being a presence and creating opportunities to meet others and demonstrate integrity and reliability, creating a foundation of mutual respect, and building trust through consistency and active listening and genuine commitment to the success and well-being of not just students, but all people in the district. Somebody who communicates and collaborates effectively is really essential for the school district with open lines of communication with everybody. And then, again, you need a clear and compelling vision for academic excellence and innovation that guides the district towards success. That, I think, is what greets the lack of trust, not, the absence of that generates distrust. So focusing on that will really help you move forward. They want a leader who keeps student growth and well-being at the heart of every decision that they make, and really demonstrating a commitment to student success, and paying attention to the academic and social and emotional development of students, and dedicated to student-centered leadership where every child is empowered to reach their full potential. Again, accessible, approachable, and visible in schools with strong connections with students, staff, and families, present in classrooms, present at school events, and always engaging with the people in the community. Because people do have to realize that there is also the office job to do, I hear that from superintendents sometimes, like, yeah, we can't be president at everything because we do have a job to do back in the office, but the more you're out there and building that trust, especially upfront, the better, with a commitment to transparency and inclusivity. And again, no surprise that trustworthy, honest, and respectful always demonstrating integrity and consistency in their words and actions. So that's the essence of what people had to say. Let me just explain what will happen with this document now. This will be used as you consider your applicant pool, figuring out who seems to be the best match. And then we'll even develop questions based on these criteria, and then you will evaluate your candidates up against these criteria as well. I also share the profile with the candidates, and so that they know what they're getting into, which is, I think, really important and helps them have a deeper understanding of what's going on. So.
Address.
Exactly, exactly. I mean, they are fairly warned of what the top issues are and what they'll need to do. I have to tell you, I will say, you have a wonderfully robust pool of candidates, which speaks volumes about the appeal of Region thirteen. And we've had some wonderful conversations with people who are very excited about the.
And we've had some wonderful conversations with people who are very excited about the potential of working here. So, good for you. So any questions or comments that?
Just on the focus groups, how are the kids?
Oh, the kids were delightful.
Yeah.
They.
You met with full size from the middle school.
Yes, we had good groups at each and they were, they, they did you proud. They were engaging. They, I guess they were nervous coming in, but you wouldn't have known that because they were very relaxed with us. I, I'm not sure that they really understand what the superintendent does, but, but they. More at the high school level they did. But the, at the middle school level, they were, they were great. It was really fun to meet with them. So enjoyed that opportunity. Oh, thank you. So it rings true. We, we do make an effort to be very honest. It's not always easy to read it, but thank you for your openness to that.
Well, thank you for doing that.
Thank you.
Not having that unbiased approach, I think is so important for us. For us, it's good feedback for everybody, I think. I'm like, I think the only thing that's a little tough is that the teacher's voice isn't as much in that profile.
It was, it came through with those who participated in the survey, but it wasn't a huge number, right? Yeah. Not yet. Yes. Right. I would suggest posting it in the, on the website, district website, if you can do that. But we haven't even shared it with candidates yet because we wanted to bring it here first.
Thank you so much for coming. We'll look forward to seeing Jack tomorrow night.
Yeah. Yeah, there are several who haven't given me confidentiality connections yet. One left. I have them from Laura, Lindsay, Linda, Tina, John, Bob, Lucy and James. Oh, he might not. Okay, great. Okay, he's not here tonight. Okay, thank you. Great. We'll see you tomorrow. And thank you very much.
Thank you.
Fixing luck. And, and bring your, bring your pillows.
We should order dinner. We don't need to. We should order a dinner, pizza or something. I always think about.
Okay. We got through four really quickly and then we have five, so now we're gonna speed up a little. Public comment. Do you have the online public comment? If you want to raise your hand. We'll have an opportunity at the end as well. Things to share. Next week, we're going to be sending our climate surveys.
Sending out school climate surveys to staff, parents and students is really crucial. For developing a positive and supportive learning environment. These surveys provide valuable insights into the experiences and perspectives of those directly involved in the school community. And allowing the district to identify the strengths and areas for improvement. By gathering feedback from all the stakeholders, so we're talking about parents and staff and students. The district can make informed decisions on how we can enhance the school culture, improve safety, foster inclusivity and address any concerns that you might have. It's my hope that by engaging the staff, parents and students in this process, that it'll also promote transparency. Build the trust that we were just talking about and encourage collaboration in working towards our shared goals. Ultimately, the results of the surveys help ensure that the school environment supports the academic, social and emotional well-being of everybody involved. I know that I've only been here for a few weeks and that there have been some large issues that we've been working on. But it's also important to get this information as it informs how we as a district move forward. The new superintendent will also use this data to inform his or her future steps. So please, I'm asking the, the parents and the staff that are here and the people on, online. Please don't click past the invitation to participate when you see it pop up in your phone or on your computer. Two weeks ago, I sent out a follow-up special education survey, climate survey to staff. As we assess our progress to date. And we've revised our school climate and school discipline policy. I've recommended a school climate specialist position in the budget to help meet the state mandates and district needs. Also may, I'm also making professional development plans for the administrators and the staff. In the areas of school climate and restorative practices, training to begin this summer. Positive school climate is the foundation of the best work in our schools. And we work more productively, we learn more effectively, we enjoy more when the school climate and culture are positive. We have excellent staff and we have remarkable students who deserve really nothing less. I also wanted to talk about the portfolio reviews that I did at the high school. I'm telling you, these kids were amazing. I, I brought with me. Some of the things that, and, and each one of them was just more outstanding than the next. But I saw business plans. I, we have our student that's Annika, who's going to be our valedictorian. She, what an author she is. And she gave us a copy of all of her, her stories. And she's, she's amazing. They were all amazing. So the portfolio review process was so professional. The kids were so well-prepared. It was really a wonderful experience. And finally, we just had our Niasca accreditation visit and we won't get that, that report back for, I think, four to six weeks. Am I right?
You have a vote on it in the summer. It'll become official in the summer.
Yeah, okay. And the preliminary feedback that DEP got that day though was very positive. And I'm, I'm really proud of the committee. It's a lot of work and I think that it was a very successful visit, so. I mean, they were, they gave us detailed business plans. It was amazing.
Yeah, I had one that was exemplary. She was amazing. And I gotta give a lot of credit to Mr. Thompson as well, too. Did an amazing job with these kids and this is my second year doing it. I agree with Bob. These kids are prepared. They came in, they were nervous initially, but once they got going, I think it prepares them. I mean, we do oral boards for, for, for jobs and, you know, it's, it's a great opportunity for them to start getting acclimated to being able to do that. I think it's an amazing program.
Which is a skill in and of itself.
And the staff at the high school because these, these kids do so well because they're okay reaching out, asking questions. And asking for help and finding ways and working through all these capstones. Connections are invaluable. It's one of the things I feel the kids have to manage capstones with the state, the MOU. They just said that they, they've always felt supported. They always felt like they've, they've had an idea and they've been helped to run with it. And no one's ever told them no.
And you talk about that connection. A lot of them that came in, at least our group, connected with a particular teacher. And spoke about that teacher and how they kind of guided them and, and helped them quite a lot. You know, all four of them that I had, all had one teacher that they really, you know, bonded with. And I think that's, I think that's, it's awesome.
We always say, it's all about the relationship.
Right, it's that one connection that you make. And I think it's, I think it's pretty awesome.
How great that, that members of the community though are there because they can bring that information forward into the community. And, and talk about all the great things that are happening at the school.
An adult parent whose son's just moved up their capstone, they said, you know, they've got a, a younger daughter that's in the elementary school. Like, how cool to be due to like elementary school mini capstone where the kids start in kindergarten and finishing fifth and like what they're interested in. And it was a cool concept. I didn't even thought of it.
They are doing student-led conferences this week.
Yeah.
So that does give them an opportunity to talk about what they're doing and what they've accomplished. So, small step.
Next, Chair Athene, I don't have much other than, I think I spoke to mostly, I think it's a female. Durham and Middlefield, that MOU on the rolling five-year average contributions for enrollment. On the day of capstone, the state department, the ED met and luckily I went because they had a few questions. And so they approved it unanimously. We're one of the first districts, we are the first district to do it. Hopefully it's going to help Durham and Middlefield plan those shifts in enrollment instead of jumping, you know, a million dollars on any given year. And I think it's giving some encouragement to, to other regional districts to really look at how they can help the towns not hit that wall. They were really thankful and it's like, fuck. We have, I have some questions on whether that needs to be codified in legislature. Because the statute talks about process, it's going to be talked about. Whether it needs to be kind of stamped into that, so. I know he'll have to add it to the book. Add an addendum to the book. Well, I have some stuff under communication.
Very brief, we finished out the month of February, sixty-four percent of our budget has been expended. We have received sixty-six percent of our revenue and we are one hundred percent in comp. So, that'll be, I'll keep my eyes on that. The only other thing I wanted to mention was we did get an email from our insurance, the state partnership plan. That the renewal rate is going to be nine point nine four, down from twelve percent. So that's good, a little bit of good news. That equates to about a hundred and seven thousand dollars for us, which is about a quarter of a percent. That's one thing and that is final rates. So we're happy about that. And, well, we're not happy about nine, nine, but we're happy it's not twelve. And that's all I have.
Kim, have staff accounts, not staff account. Accounts for staff been frozen at this point in the year?
They're not frozen. That's a misconception. What I've asked is for everyone to come to funds that they think they might need before the end of the year. That gives me a better idea of knowing where, if we have any kind of surplus we can apply or if we do have to cut back in. If it's a supply, this was communicated to, to principals, secretaries, union president. If it's a supply need for this year, it's going to go through. But yeah, if it's for next year, then I'm holding those off until we get a little bit further in the year before I approve those. So nothing has been denied or closed. They've just been sort of, you don't need it today. Let's wait a couple of weeks and see where we're at.
Alright, so I think the misconception is out there that. Are getting, no, but that, that staff are asking. For supply funds or to order supplies when they're being told now. That's the information that.
And then, that's why I, I did have a conversation with Craig because this happened a few years ago. People were under that impression and they were going to the UN, but that is not the case. I don't know who's telling them no. That's why we need to have this conversation, you know, where you can tell me so that I can take action. If someone were to put in, come by anticipated supplies between now and the end of the year, I didn't approve that yet. Because when they need those supplies, then tell me and then we'll, we'll place that, that appeal. So, you know, it might not be the one-day turnaround that they're used to. But no one's going to deny the supply that they need ever, ever.
Is there a large? Reason that we're already.
We are highly over-expended in two areas, which I have to say is special education tuition and special education. Three hundred fifty-eight thousand dollars. So what's that doing is that's taking from all the other accounts that are under-expended. To offset that so our balance, we don't go over in our budget. We're not there because we have funds and other accounts that are, are offsetting that and helping that so that we don't go over budget. But that's why I have to be very careful about if someone wants a, you know, next year's calendar planner, let's wait till next year. So no one's being told no. If it's to teach a class, you're going to get it. If it's, like I said, if it's a whole new array of a paper cutter and a, you know, tape dispenser or something that. Can you go a couple more weeks with your tape dispenser kind of thing until we know where we are better? That's, that's how it's, it's, they're not being told now. And I, it frustrates me to hear that. Because nobody comes to me either and says that and then I get here to the board meeting.
Right.
It's not what happens.
I've noticed in my school, we all communicate by email. Does anybody have any of these? And sure enough, it's like, oh yeah, I have six, please take them.
Buying packs and packs of index cards and you need just a handful, maybe ask your next, your teacher next door if you can. I, I don't know it's being told and then it's being reported up to you. So if I knew that, I could fix it.
So Kim, just for maybe some clarification, I had a request for something that wasn't in somebody's original budget. And so that's, yeah, and, and it's, well, we have to wait and talk that out, not that. And so, because we've spent it all of our budget items that we already budgeted for. So, with, you know, whether you call that a freeze or not a freeze, we're not accepting any new requests.
And this is like, seven years. I mean, I've done this for seven years. Not new. Every year I hear that they're taking their money. And, you know, if you want to buy your unit calculators for next year, you'll buy that with next year's money. We're not buying that with this year. You need them for this year? No.
Multiple colors. Through, through by five, at least, and already.
It goes deeper than that, you know.
Okay.
No, I just signed in, but then I have to sign again.
No, I'll tell that very quickly.
Working on that. What I did um for this report was I used for um goals outlined and tried to put everything under those categories, but before I told them. Yeah, but.
Yeah, I mean, she needs more time because we have the next one. Or if anyone has, I mean, we're under finance today. That must be a big budget question.
Yeah, um, you want to do early meeting? Do you think that's a good way to open?
Yes. I believe in community, I think it's also going to be um, in both of them. Ladies, I think that's done. And uh, quite looking forward to go on through the interview. Uh, the policy committee that um, so getting fifth also and the win streak policies that we're going to publish tonight. The building committee ran on February seventh and the U. It only addressed candidates. Uh, had five as the big proposals and all the jobs. And depending on that we work through that at a time. So these, there's probably more attention that was set of firing and we'd like to see that is uh further along every Policy Committee left on October nineteenth and the usual distractions with that on the Thursday night. Uh, there's a couple of policies we put forward yesterday, uh, to see if that's a very technical and uh, you know, we, you know, complicated some issues with learning. Uh, but it's a little more complicated than we have time for. And so those will move on to the next meeting. The building committee on February ninth interviewed the uh four architect candidates and we selected one to do it for the board's track. And so we were doing um well, we were using have really good uh proposals. Um, there is three of, three of those, uh, I don't know if you proposed, but uh, three of, uh, the time and and uh, self of the, you know. Did a whole great deal of law work and had done the policy. There are some things behind, behind um no.
Oh, that's Thank you. Um, quick words. Priority safety and security enhancements. So um, safety and security is coordinated by Kim and Robin primarily. Um, and they do a wonderful job, as I'm sure you both know. Um, but our safety plan was submitted at the beginning of the school year um for twenty-four, twenty-four school year, twenty-four, twenty-five. Um, we had an update to uh the athletic plan uh this past week. Um, so to um align with regulations. Um, security committee met most recently yesterday. And um, we have, but those meetings typically quarterly with the leadership team and first responders. Uh, we reviewed our standard response protocol um by our free quarter that our unit-wide safety plan with both towns and the district has been approved by state. And um, that will be out to the people who need to know um in the next um month or so. Um, we updated, uh, we've had updated swatting and bomb threat training for staff who answer phone calls. Um, their school security training video was required training for all staff to complete at the beginning of the school year that was done. Um, and then we have a fire department safety alert form um that we are going to share out with families um uh with children of special needs or autism. And that's what that looks like. And it's just what it says, autism safety alert forum and just provide communication and quick access um to important information um for kids who might need some special care um during an emergency. So this is the Middlefield copy. Um, we can all use this. It's on Middlefield Fire Company website. Also, it's on the Durham um company website, but they're interchangeable from what Peter Tipp told me yesterday. So we'll try and, um, that's not. So, um, and then we also have monthly meetings. Um, there's a collection of us that go, um, certainly, um, on the leadership team, you can, Robin, myself, um, go to our Aces and Connecticut Center for School Safety and Crisis Preparation, um, the Regional School Safety Monthly Meetings. Um, so that's in there. And then we use standard, old standard risk assessment protocols on parent district for threat assessment and suicide and self-harming concerns. Um, so for the self-harm, we use the Claudia and for threat assessments, we use the Dewey Purnell Intervention and Support Model. All of our counselors are trained in both of those. So, um, there was some review awards and other forms of recognition for six through twelve. So we have um Strong, you can go up there for the value awards, Spartan postcards, Spartan recognition forums, um scholar leader awards. And CRHS, we have climate and culture-related awards and activities, the Blue Devil Award, um district-wide unified field trips, uh unified sports award. We were um the class of twenty twenty-four national banner, unified champion school. This mouse is very incremental, excuse me. Okay. We also have the twenty twenty-four Michael's Cup Award for Unified, which is the highest honor and is presented annually to middle school and high school. And the high school received it this year. Um, I'm sure most of you are aware. Um, Mr. Bajorus holds our twenty twenty-two school coach of um, uh, high school unified coach of the year. And we also have our unified MVP award and coaches um, coaches awards that are presented during spring sports for um we also annually go to the cast unified sports. Am I not loud enough? Sorry. Academic or department awards. We have um the Cagan Chag Academic Awards, which are presented annually as what was scholarship night is annually. Um, our music department awards night. Um, there are the Cagan Chag Sports Award Nights, which are three nights per year per season. We have fall, winter, and spring. Um, Future Choices Art Show. Um, the art, uh, student artwork is featured in the Shoreline Art Show at the Old Line Academy, Academy of Art. Sorry. Um, Shoreline Social Studies Award, Shoreline Math Award, which is both our annual breakfasts and the Cass Arts Banquets, which um two students are honored for excellence in music or art. MTA received this year the Community Impact Award um from Middletown. And MTA is being cited as an exemplar at state transition trainings. Um, so a review of our current anonymous reporting mechanism for safety and well-being. So say something update. So this is the Sandy Hook Promise, Say Something. Um, and Kim had um reviewed, um, had vetted it two years ago, twenty twenty-three? Was I think, was it right after COVID? I think it was right after COVID, twenty twenty-two, twenty-three school year. Um, and there's also, there, for reference down there, you'll see the the anonymous survey cost lists from twenty twenty-three as well. Um, and so at the time, we really liked it. Um, the Sandy Hook Say Something Promise, it fit all of our needs. It was um free to the district. Um, it's um it runs via grant. It is an online reporting uh process that is twenty-four hours a day, three hundred and sixty-five days a year. That's fully staffed with um mental health counseling professionals um to take um anonymous reports and then uh triage. Um, so there was a very long waitlist. They didn't have enough providers um at the time when we last looked into it. Um, this year I started, um, uh, I reached out to um them again. And um, we are now in the onboarding process. So that's very good news. We um just wait, awaiting an MOU to sign. Um, and there, I added the Say Something PowerPoint for the onboarding process. I don't know that we want to review it word for word. Um, I can, if you want, want to look at it. Um, but if, you know, I will share this presentation with all of you if you want to look at it at another time. So that's the next one on the, right? So um, our reporter, our current reporting system that students um really spearheaded a couple of years ago, we still, it isn't completely anonymous, but it helps children report without having to go and get a report form from the office. So our reporting system on the District thirteen website, it's still there under our District Climate Resources. It's still up and running. Those are the reports that we, um, you know, that we get. Um, we have not gotten any um recent um and reports through that system. Like this year, yeah. Um, we've gotten just the emailed reports or the hand-delivered reports. So I think the Say Something, um, they train us, they have the, um, they have a campaign to show students and staff and families how it works, how to access it, how to utilize it. So um, hopefully that will be, and it can remain completely anonymous. Um, so hopefully that will um be a better option for our community and our students. So um, the the next uh heading is the uh RSD thirteen extracurricular offerings um that the the board wanted updates on. So Memorial, you can see Health and Wellness Club, Your Book, Art, Sewing and Design. Um, then you can obviously read our Strong Clubs and and offerings. Um, CRHS uh Clubs and Offerings are up there as well. Um, and then obviously athletics is fall, winter, and spring in unified sports. Um, Training for Equity and Diversity and SEL district-wide. This year, we've been working again this year with Carrie Lord. Um, we've had three um workshops with administration on race and equity. Um, we've had um professional learning group last year and um a new professional learning group this school year. There's ten sessions in all. It's voluntary professional learning group to, um, it's after school hours. So teachers can use it as their professional learning um credit. So that, towards the last two days, Carrie Lord is um, where she's from that center for the educational leadership, yeah, Center for Educational Leadership. Um, and she is a um DEI um diversity, equity, inclusion um expert there. Um, and we've used, she's been wonderful um for all of our trainings. We've gotten nothing but good feedback from um staff who have been in the professional learning groups with her. Um, you'll also, you'll see her name throughout this presentation because we've had her in working with the fifth grade team last year um to help with the new um curriculum and introducing um some race-related topics during the new curriculum. So she's um as well. So you'll see her throughout this um, our training portion. Um, Restore Practice Trainings that are again scheduled in um in the buildings. Um, and we are um committed, we have committed to increase the training, the trainer certified staff. Um, we have two uh counselors that are doing it um during Train the Trainer. Um, uh, the modules this school year, and then we have two more that are committed to do it over the summer. Um, and hopefully be ready for the upcoming school year. Then that will give us four more people in addition to Fitz and Amy. Um, we've had, uh, over the summer, our summer session with administration and the leadership team, we had OCR and CHRO training sessions. Um, the administration consortium meetings are very, very helpful and useful, especially with all of the um concerns that we've had over this school year. Um, starting in the fall with the school threat to um strong and continuing up to um concerns with um uh inappropriate racial slurs um that we've had to continue to address um at the um at at many grade levels. Um, uh, last week, was it last week? It was March fourth. We had Trooper James White uh in to do training for social media awareness for parents and families. Uh, we had twelve people in participation for that. He was great. And 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 we, and we increased our parent participation by two times, which still wasn't that many, but he was great. And he um left all the resources with us and um told us we can reach out to him anytime. So if we want to um revisit that again with any staff, uh, students or parents, we can certainly do that again. Yeah. Yeah, I know. Yeah. He did have a PowerPoint. He did not share it with me. I can reach out to him, John. The PowerPoint was interactive. I don't know how that worked. Yeah.
Buy it, but if there's information, you know.
Yeah. I will. Pick these out to reach out to him and ask him if he has the actual PowerPoint to share. How can you do it? Thank you. And I'll continue on. Thank you. Okay. Um, and then up here for the the Brewster list of um DEI and um equity and um and our um SEL diversity interventions. I don't have to read to you guys. I'll do that. Lyman has one as well. Um, Lyman's is parsed out by grade. Um, I want to give a shout out to Jenny Luzier, who for Brewster and Lyman has been um purposely increasing purposely increasing our, our libraries and the diversity and culture books in, in, in our elementary school libraries. Who has, yeah, who's, yeah, yeah, very dry, fun way, yeah. They have Memorial up there. You'll also see that Carrie Lord, you know, participated at our back-to-school Professional Development Days at Memorial, Creating Community Through Conversation and Professional Learning. And again, that, that came out of our twenty-three, twenty-four school year. Talking about looking at the Grade Fifth EL Curriculum for the Model Three on Social Justice. So we did that at the beginning of this year because we noticed that in the middle of last year, we needed to be more proactive. And again, addition of our multiple diverse books, multiple points of view to the curriculum and Social Studies units. I'm so subject, this analysis is not friendly. Strong Restorative Practice Trainings. Advisory Lessons, Carrie Lord is also working, we're working with Carrie Lord to do an actual interactive conference, presentation with students for this spring too. And Fitz and Cheryl are getting a date on that. We had the vaping presentation. And then there are announcements from Student Council Members for Activism and Joy and Black History Month. Coggin Chug Regional High School recently had Kendrick Moore, who was a CIAC representative, and he met with various stakeholders, leadership teams, students. He had some great meetings with students. We had some students from Strong come up and participate. He presented at the, the Coggin Chug faculty meeting as well. And he was excellent. Yes. I don't know when your line game was, I'm sorry.
I think it was Old Line versus Hartford Public.
Oh.
Okay, you're right.
Okay. He was with us Monday. Oh, it was, okay. So he spent the entire day here and, like you said, with students, with student.
He met our ninth grade, met with our eleventh and twelfth grade, he met with his leadership, both of the athletic side and then all of our class representatives, student body government representatives. He then met with a panel of district administrators from the local school. Then finally, he's got our faculty meeting with the faculty.
And we want him back. Yeah, so we'll, we'll make further plans. Go ahead, Bob, I'm sorry.
No.
Race.
There's a fine line between enjoying your childhood and ruining your future. Like, kind of like step up, know what's important, like, get after it. His message was very motivational in nature and, and very just trying to get the very different message to our ninth and tenth years and our eleventh and twelfth years. They're like, the eleventh and twelfth are like, this is Durham, Connecticut. You are going out into a world, as you know, you did the numbers. And that, with the little ones, he kind of said, you know, you got to treat everyone around you. You want to be treated. Like, he was very, very direct with them.
Yeah.
Especially with the leadership team too.
Excellent conversation.
Some guidance for how to deal with some of the issues. Very good.
Yeah, it was excellent. Yeah, Lindsay, we would definitely like to invite him back in to, we'll let you know. He's excellent. The Save a Life Tour, then EMT, Paralympic Curler, which was, he was well-received as well. Mock Crash Demonstrations, the vaping awareness presentation was done here. Strong did that as well. Distracted Driving, collaborations with Durham Middlefield Youth and Family Services have been ongoing. I cannot say enough about Durham Middlefield Youth and Family Service and their collaborative efforts with us this year. They have been incredible, so.
They're coming up from the board, giving some update on their rebranding and programming and offering. You know, that's probably working on making sure that we're a municipal nonprofit.
That's, that's what I was thinking of earlier. We need to put that back on the policy. Yes. I thought we had done it. So we looked back in our policy minutes and we were supposed to come back to it. Because we had talked about it in October, November, but we didn't come back to it. So we'll, we'll need to come back to that. Yeah, absolutely. Yeah. But their partnership and collaboration has, I, I can't say enough about how wonderful they've been. Absolutely, so. Yeah. Yeah, absolutely. Yeah. They, they've been phenomenal. Let's see, our discipline and tolerance activities, the teacher training. We have a cohort of four for the African-American, Black, and Puerto Rican Latino. You just gave me your. I don't think you really did. I don't think it's really contagious that quickly. In the course of studies for the training series. So the high school has somebody enrolled in that state training. Are some of our district-wide climate efforts. So we are in our second year of our fully-funded grant, full-time social worker. So that's, we get her for one more year. And this, we've had two summers as well, or we have three summers total as well too. I already talked about updating our training for restorative practices to hopefully force staff by the time we start, start our school year, twenty-five, twenty-six. Again, collaboration with Durham Middlefield Youth and Family Services and DCF. We had a suicide awareness and prevention roundtable presentation. Brendan Burks from Connecticut Office of Child Advocacy had a wonderful presentation. And wonderful isn't the right word because it was a very alarming presentation about, about child and teen mental health and how poor it is and suicide. Suicide ideation and the rise and increase of teen childhood and teen suicide. So that's on there. I did not mean to do that. So. It's, it's a very informative presentation and very alarming presentation that we did on October seventeenth. And I want to say there was about twenty community members at, at that, at that event. So as everybody knows, we've had lots of regulation guideline and policy shifts just in the past couple of months. And we had a full Title IX update for and training requirements for the start of school year twenty twenty-four. Those were revoked in January twenty twenty-five. So there's been lots of updates and conversations around how to best meet the needs of all of our students and staff during this time of change. So, let's see, co-sponsoring, we're co-sponsoring a book club with Durham Middlefield Youth and Family Services. And that. Mr. Moore, what did you do? In both our Durham and Middlefield libraries, we have met twice. We will be meeting twice per book. We had completed The Anxious Generation by Jonathan Haidt. And we had excellent community parent participation for that. I want to say we had twenty-nine participants for that book club. Our next book is Atomic Habits, and we will be meeting in April. And I, I can get you guys the date and put that in there too. Let's see, after that, we'll do When the Body Says No, The Cost of Hidden Stress, and Quiet, The Power of Introverts in a World That Can't Stop Talking. So those are, those are our next books to come. As Dr. Charles said, our school climate surveys will be out next week. Please answer, respond. High school, it will be giving their surveys March seventeenth in advisory. And, you know, the elementary schools will do it in homeroom. And I believe that Strong is doing it in advisory as well. Student Service, again, as Dr. Charles said, we put out the Student Services and Special Education Survey out a couple of weeks ago. That's going directly to Dr. Charles for, to interpret and update so that hopefully we will be on track for, you know, just meeting the needs of all of our staff and students based on their input. Here's a link to our social emotional tier interventions that are just kind of ongoing interventions that we have. We're also using, continuing the use of Aperture and DESA for mental health screening checklist for all students. The second report was in January, and then the final report will be in May. And so we'll do another update on on our pre, mid, and post, and year-end data for Aperture and Mental Health Screening. We're continuing the use of Second Step, Ripple Effects, School Links, Lessons in advisory at the secondary level. And elementary schools are bringing back Basketball Jones, the presentation by popular demand, I guess, in the fall. The, the parent, the PTO, the parent groups had hired him and everybody loved him. It's an anti-bullying awareness presentation. And there was a couple of different, different. There's a follow-up to it, and, and everybody wanted that back. So the next presentation will be, they're scheduling, I believe, for May for each of the schools. So a link, there's a link here to our district or October climate meeting with all sorts of other things that were done at the beginning of the year. I can go into those, or you guys can read it, you let me know. And a link to our district or January climate meeting. Most of what was in there has been shared tonight. And then here are reporting numbers. Go ahead. Oh, you don't have access? Okay, yes, I absolutely will. Yep. Yeah. It's because the document within the doc, the documents are in my Google Drive. So did you, if you request access, I can just click on it. Got it. Got it, got it. Yep. And so here are district reports for office referrals. Bus referrals. Out-of-school suspensions, in-school suspensions. Unexcused absences, are students considered truant? Number of bullying complaints filed and number substantiated. And I'll just let you guys look at those numbers. And I know one of the questions, John, last time was, so for the out-of-school and in-school suspensions, are those forty-three different kids? Are those forty-three days with a certain number of kids? And so it's, those are number of days of suspensions. And the makeup for out-of-school and in-school suspension numbers is nineteen students. And at the high school and sixteen students at Strong. So we're looking at the repeat or multiple days of suspension. I'm sorry, Bob, I can't hear. Totally, yeah, those are days. Yeah, no, the total, so it's out-of-school and in-school. So it's the forty-three plus the seventeen, so it's the sixty. So there's sixty total days of suspension and nineteen kids. Yeah. That's a good question. I can go and look at last year's totals from this time. Yeah. It's high. It's been high since COVID. Yeah. Oh, yes. Yeah. So there's a, we have a process and a protocol. So I think we send out a letter, I mean, we reach out, be a phone call or email to, to parents or students. It, but it's, we have warning letters after, what do we do after ten days? Or there are warning letters? What? Nine, yeah, nine.
We need every Friday as a counseling staff, with our counselors, discuss credits and credit hours and absences. Every Friday, we run the report and have a conversation about it.
No. Well, no, there's a process. So yes, there's letters that go out, there's phone calls, there's meetings.
Like attendance hearings.
Yes.
If you lost a credit meeting for the first time in years, Fisher.
Yeah. Which helps. Yeah, it's not fun, but. Yeah. Well.
Do you can pass the exam without being.
Yeah. 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 The last, yeah, well, yes, the last update, yes, last time I, yeah, was June. It's high. Yeah, we're high. And what I will say about some of the bullying complaints are kind of clustered in the same kind of issue, issues and problems. So it's multiple complaints surrounding one situation or two situat-, you know what I mean? Not all of them, but it's been a very unique January and February for us here in district. It's been a very unique um January and February for us here in district. So i- i- and part of it is we're trying to be. More accountable, right, we've heard feedback, um it it's, but I, you know, as a. I I always fear that we don't want to go too far in the opposite direction, right? We don't want to be too punitive, but we don't want to be too lenient and really finding a balance is what is important. And you know, the state um and you know, tells us to watch our suspensions and expulsions. And monitor and do restorative and we want to do all of those things, I think, but we're moving. Just restorative and eh eh there's got to be a balance somewhere and and trying to strike that balance, I think, is important. Yeah, I do, yeah, we we've got feedback and I think that um that feedback was um heard and um and honored. And again, I probably because we were too lenient, trying to be too restorative, right? It I it's not for any. You know, ill intent.
Try to encourage them and motivate them.
If you, if you can find it, you you can retire, yeah. Absolutely. And and we need to find a balance and a balance that respects individualism and and um and student needs. And and faculty needs and you know, everybody's. And budgetary needs, you know, and on and off, yeah. Um but I will share all of this with you and I'll make sure you have the access to the um. To uh the full report. We get a lot of, yeah, I, next, yeah, yeah, try, we try.
I'd like to suggest that. And we talked about this under the previous regime. That these kinds of reports, we should get ahead of time so we can read it to ourselves instead of being read to. And so that you can hit the highlights and we can ask questions. And that is a much better use of our time than to sit.
Please.
True, I I hope that's a good indication. Thank you. All right, um committee reports.
More padding.
Bob, you want to finish up on committee reports?
Yeah, Tina, you're next. Tina. We're going back to you.
For student achievement um report, or Lucy, Lucy, do you have a report on student achievement? Thank you for the translation.
I also don't have, these are not linked in the minutes for. There are any of the mid-year achievement data that um they presented. I didn't hit the highlights, there are going to be questions that I probably am not going to give. Um just because I don't have that with me, it was a lot, like mid-year data was. Um so. The highlight of the meeting was Ryan Boffin, who was coming from the high school to share um three, yeah, three or four seniors. Four seniors who talked about their evolution as artists within. And it was beautiful, um they talked about creativity, collaboration, space-based. They talked about how art impacts their lives, Ryan talked about like being disruptors um and. And and even his goals, aren't to create artists, but to create diverse thinkers. Um and the the different things, they were part of your birth from America. What they're doing, what their time and their and their skill, factor, is amazing. And they're going to carry with them all the best part. Um we, we got um mid-year achievement review data. We talked about. IXL map, which is grade six through eight, Dibbles, which is the Dible. IXL PLA, um the grades six through eight. Um PS eighteen for grades eight through eleven. The common theme was that games are being made and everything. It's except for. Um exception of grade eight, IXL map scores, they didn't dip, but they didn't improve. That was thought to be, if you look at those scores, the thought is the sports system itself is getting adjusted. Um and that, that's a contributing factor. Good engagement, noticeable growth in grades out there in the LA. Um there are some questions that have come up um on the L, benchmark data. And also with the math, so our next meeting, um we're talking about um the math places. For fourth grade that are being competing up to sixth grade for next year. We've got, and I don't know how many people on the board have received emails from parents. Concerns about it, and and a lot of it um. A lot of the concern for questions um that I think are being clarified as they reach out. Of information with each other so that we're all on the same page. Um goals for the remaining year, addressing some of the instructional gaps based on the assessment results, these assessments come out. You get the results um. So they can pick apart what specific skills um they need to focus on in their classes. Um budget implications, we talked about textbook updates. We should be hearing as students, you learn about textbook updates. Um and we had a good conversation about outdoor education um in that. Student achievement is in full support of expanding outdoor education, not. So those, those, you know, twice-a-year trips out to like the rural pools or the lakes that they. From the community, um this student achievement movement here, we support that. We want to see more funding go to that. We're not updating any admin to talk about and care about on that programming. Uh we did have one individual come and speak during public comment and her public comment, a lot of was. Which was the concern about um laboratory director and wanted. And things that we've heard. That data.
How many times are we reviewing that?
Three times a year, beginning of year, middle of year, end of year.
And what are we doing as a metric? What are, what are, are we putting goals, are we looking, what is, what's our overall?
Continue to.
Yeah, what are we looking to, what, are we putting benchmarks, basically, are we? I mean, are we at the state averages, are we above the state averages, are we where uh the neighboring private schools are at? Where we lose a lot of these kids to, um those are questions I've asked since I've been on the board that I've never really gotten any feedback on. So to me, what's important is to see whether or not our benchmarks are meeting those, get beyond. So is, are those comparisons going to be put in there?
Um they, they were, they, 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 they didn't have comparison for the state. I remember saying, I thought we were about, for the most part. But I think the board should have a copy of those assessments, I think, because in the past, they have been. Uh available to the board.
With the eye-ready assessments? What assessments?
The ones that, the ones that we received ourselves, that we looked at, the ones we just looked at.
So you want what, what was given to the committee, you want given to the whole board, is that what you're saying?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, and I think I asked for it to be attached to the minutes.
And are individuals being identified that are not meeting those benchmarks? And how are we outreach to those kids to make sure that they are getting what they need, which has always been a big, a big impact.
So um in terms of math, like they love to be grading or they're scoring. IFL, math grades five through eight, um there are thirty-one grading students.
Yeah, the comparisons to the state averages are there, but not comparison to like um the dirt or other schools, so that's something we should.
Well, I mean, because we lose those kids, because parents think that that's a better education, better school, it's better, all of that. You know, people that live here should be going to school here, it's a reason why people live here. And so we've been a big attention, attention, yeah, where, you know, we're going to be living here, we want our kids to be here. These kids will all grow up together, we lose great athletes, we lose great musicians, we lose great kids that go to these schools. Now granted, you know, some of them like the prestige they're following to those schools and getting, but if we're offering the same and we're able to at least. Put that out there and think that is important, that's something that our, our future superintendent should be focusing on and going to.
And I, I think some of it, they explained it was hard to, based on, it's hard to compare it to last year's because this is a new, the I, new IXL program. As well as it's, it's hard to compare with other districts who have different programs and different assessments. But it's definitely something we should ask, I know if Stephanie and Liza are still here, they'd probably answer.
Yeah.
And moving forward, I think it's just important for us to all kind of keep an eye on it and thank you for you guys doing that. Because I think essentially that is probably the most important thing, we talk about all these other things. But I've always thought that that's probably the most important thing, because at the end of the day, unfortunately, those are the things that are going to make our kids stand out and make our kids. Marketable for themselves, take to the college and of applying and moving forward and I think, you know.
I think it's also important in our meetings tomorrow and the next few days that we stress that. And I, the board had made. Uh when it first adopted its goals, it, it was one of those, we were at the bottom of the dirt at the time with certain scores. And we had a three-year plan to get within the, you know, a upward level, and we did. And and the superintendent forced more instruction and, you know, and got, the grades went up. And so it was important to focus on that as a board, is to, like, this is a priority. For the superintendent to to address that.
Well, I also think that it keeps our, and I don't want to sound. It also keeps our tenured teachers.
Yeah.
Who have been here for a long period of time engaged, because then there's a, in my opinion, there's at least a marker or something to hold individuals accountable. For making sure that there's kids in that certain classes, that we've identified teachers that are just not doing what they should be doing, some of these kids. That these numbers, not to say that, you know, the numbers are the, that tell everything, but it tells enough. Is multiple kids are not doing well or whatever the case, but that's just.
Right, I, I think it's important to be careful, like, we have to be careful too, when we're talking about like. Um you know, within our roles and our roles in approving curriculum, you know, edge, we need to make sure that we are providing. Our teachers and our staff with the resources to be able to teach the curriculum that we approve. And that's, you know, that's a, you know, we've talked about it a lot and we need to make sure that whatever that we approve and whatever supports we give. Are giving confidence to our staff that they can teach that, and that the parents are confident that the teachers have what they need. Um that the programs that they have, that they are um successful. And it's, it's a, we have a community that really wants to know a lot and that's okay, these are their kids. It's their, you know, they're the parents and.
To go back on something that that John was saying, they're talking about the students that, hmm, if you look at our district enrollment, the one that came out in March. There's a hundred and twelve students that are, that are not in this, in this, in the school, there's elsewhere, twenty-one of whom are being homeschooled. And I don't know if that even includes Mercy and Xavier. It, I don't think it includes Mercy and Xavier, so it's a minimum, it's one twelve plus.
But that's just from high school, are you saying that's at the high school?
Well, they're not necessarily, because if you look down here, we have some um. Like in the magnet school, there's pre-K kids, first grade.
Right.
Third grade, fifth grade, so it's, it's across the board. It's good, that's great, right, but what does that look like in terms of? The other human that they're going to be. They are talking about. I don't, and I don't want to use this as an excuse, but I also, but I'm, I want to use it as a, hey, guys, there's an opportunity here. Um this comprehensive math review was coming about because there was. Um, this comprehensive national review was coming about because there was significant scale noted, right? In the first one, because for three years, we've had no curriculum. And for three years, we've had no curriculum director to guide that process. And those two things are causational, correlative, without background.
Well, look.
Oh, boy.
Uh, there's seats covered now. We're all interconnected.
So, I agree, at the next student achievement meeting, um, we are going to be talking about the national review. And I'm going to ask them, so what is the goal, right? Talk about growth, what is the goal? If there is no goal, that's, that's not a test, right? That's a problem. Growth is free. Um, it's why I'm also going to continue advocating for, to set up our superintendent, our staff. By advocating for curriculum directors. We can refer to, we heard it from leadership profiles, we heard it from parents, we heard it from the community, we heard it from staff. Um, I'm going to transition to that, and I know that's not part of my report, but the.
No, I just, I don't think it's fair to say that because we don't have a position that is quote unquote curriculum director. But there hasn't been any oversight of curriculum. And that's what we're hearing from, whether it's on the board or in the public, there's no curriculum director, so what? Like, it doesn't matter. There are districts who don't have curriculum directors, they have other people who oversee the curriculum. I'm not saying our curriculum's in good shape, but I think by putting our eggs in this basket of having a curriculum director. It's not going to solve our issues, right? I, I don't think that that is, whatever we call them, right? The, the undergoing the curriculum, working with the curriculum, writing curriculum, all that. Liza and Stephanie in those positions, they're, that's what they're doing. If they're not doing it to the point where it's having a positive impact. That's for the superintendent to then oversee with their oversight to decide what they should be doing, what they aren't doing, and then holding them accountable. So I think that it's, it's, it's not going to solve a problem by. By creating this one position, like it's, like it's the, uh, the red pill or the blue pill.
You pick it.
Uh, whatever, like the pill is going to solve all the problem. So, um, and then I also think that the, we have to think about the distinction between curriculum and instruction. Because if there's, you know, and I've said it for almost three years, four months away, um, that our issue is tier one instruction. It's not just the curriculum. It's how that curriculum is being instituted, and so that is a, is a totally different thing. So if somebody wants oversight over the curriculum, do they, or do they want oversight over instruction? And I think that that's, and a curriculum director certainly has input into that. But a lot of that's happening at the school leadership level, through supervision and evaluation. And setting a standard for what the instructional court is and all those pieces. So I, I think that there's clearly. The opportunity to tighten up and or create, because I still say we don't have that, uh, a language or script one. Um, we have a program. Um, and so that, that is something that we can do, but I don't know that, that putting all of our eggs in that one basket is, is. The, 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 the primrose path that we should be following.
I pulled off pretty good. You didn't say, oh, once. If I can connect this to, to budget seasoning every hour. Even the most conscientious people in the community that talk about budget and they go right to that cost per student all the time. And what I'm hearing is, okay, go ahead and spend the twenty-six thousand, what's our number now? For, and again, we know it's not a valid number for many reasons. But damn it, you better be giving them an education for that. That's what I hear over and over and over again, that number connected to achievement. So as this improves, hopefully it will be, uh, we don't have to go through multiple budgets before it gets passed. That could happen this year.
No, I just think that, you know, we need, if we're going to set a goal, it's going to be. Very difficult to pick what that goal should be. Uh, we had, when we had dirks and stuff, it was easy. We said, we're over here, we want to be here. And somebody wants, we don't have the dirk, we don't have, we don't have the standardized test that everybody's using, you know? But it'd be great if we could, could like, compare ourselves to the, some performance level at different schools. And we need to figure out how to do that the best way. Uh, and, and how do we, how do we, and if we're, we're here and we want to be, you know, if. If Westbrook is up here and we're here, how do we get to Westbrook?
Yeah.
You know, we've got, got to figure that out and make that our goal, and that would be the responsibility of that superintendent to get us there.
I also think there's a danger in.
Yeah, it's hard.
Compared to another district.
I understand.
I was going to say, what about looking at our scores and comparing them to our scores? You know, I mean, we should see growth in our own scores.
We do do that, yeah.
Yeah, and it's, we're not even completely.
One of the things that concerns, and it's always been a concern, is because we are blessed with. Out of a hundred students, that eighty of them.
Yeah.
Are bright.
Yeah.
We have bright kids in the, in this town, we really do. But those, those twenty bother me. They bother me a lot because they're lost, because the teacher is like, I've got. Twenty kids in my classroom, and up to twenty, to ten percent, it's always ten percent, right? That ten percent, those two to three that are not doing so well, I just don't want them lost in that. They, the numbers might look great, but I, I'm more concerned about the kids that are not doing well and the ones that need to get to that level. And I don't want them to ever be lost. I don't want them to be in a position where they're, they're being ignored, uh, or having, because I've had to deal with this in the past too.
Yeah.
That I have to come in and advocate for my kid because there's not enough people that are giving him that attention, right? I hear that a lot from the kids that are, you know, that are not doing well. Because let's face it, kids that are good students, kids that are a lot of media, they're, they're going to do well, or it doesn't matter what class you put them in. It's the ones that are not doing well or just barely getting that C or whatever.
The quiet ones that are just getting by.
Right, and it's, it's clear to me sometimes that you'd have, and then again, I'm looking at brain, land teachers for this, but I mean, they need to be identified. And they need that extra help, and it was, you know, it's reassuring that, you know, those kids are getting that extra help. I'm just hoping.
But I think that's what we talk about with tier one, we don't get to that level where we are identifying at an older age. Because we now see them slipping through the cracks if we identify that in, in that tier one instruction from the beginning.
Well, there need the ninth graders in this school now because of that, we were talking about that three-year gap that in. One of mine is mine, and, you know, math is, she's, she's struggled with, but I'm just saying, I'm sure there's other parents that are, that are in that same boat. Uh, doing significantly better with kids, extra help, but I mean, at the end of the day, there's a lot of kids like that, I think. But there's significantly more bright kids in the town. We're blessed with a lot of, I mean, it's clear as day, we got bright kids. And watching Capstone is, was another, uh, example of that, but I'm just saying that's twenty percent.
Linda, I just want to get back to curriculum director. It may not be the answer to how a curriculum director, but if you have someone on staff. You still need to have someone there that has that expertise in curriculum, so there's got to be somebody, no matter what you call them. That has that, that expertise in, in curriculum development and instruction.
Right, and we have to, sure, well, I don't know.
Well, again, I, I would lay that blame on the previous regime and the lack of direction.
Exactly.
They are clearly capable and have the background knowledge.
Yes.
So again, it's up to the new superintendent, how do they want to deal with that?
Yeah, the direction was different.
Right, yeah, right.
I agree with you, new superintendent, he says, find out what's going to be best for them. I just always get the feeling that Taggantog level, it's like, the drumbeat is just college, 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 college. And we know there are kids that just are not interested in it, it's going to disengage them, and that's more reason why we need to engage them here in a different way. Uh, versus just, ah, you're not going to go to college, it's not that that happens, but. I do sometimes think people have a target on their back, like, whoa, you're not really following the program. Come on, get with it, get a car, go to college.
Well, let's point out that we always get Lucy a hard time for her long student achievement reports, and Tina's was longer, but much needed and perfect.
No, I think it's fine, I appreciate, I appreciate that, because that was, that's really, uh, to me, that's, we could talk about all this other stuff, but the bottom line, that's the meat and potatoes of what's going on here. Right.
Budget, it touches, um, this, where we're like, right, like.
Yeah.
How do you, how do you pull back and what operations we have for actions when the direction has been missing? Right, um, so, thank you.
Of course, I'm super proud.
Um, yeah, I can do finance, uh, if you don't mind, Jason, because I have it in front of me. Um, really quick finance met, uh, we also had a joint finance meeting tonight, um, with the finance committee, uh, a few of the members. And I did send out, it's one of our, um, aware, so we have, we're supposed to have two elected for Durham and two elected from Middlefield. Um, the two elected from Middlefield, um, one, we haven't had any kind of response from, um, so I emailed the town, and it's the same communication information they have. Um, so I'll just keep getting some of the information. And the other, um, vacancy, um, was not filled in June, so we don't, we have a vacancy in Middlefield, and that won't get, um, come up for town meeting again until this coming June. And then, um, we do have Nick from Middlefield that we appointed, um, and then we have Chuck and Teresa who came tonight. Phenomenal, and they've been really great. Chuck's also on the, uh, board of finance, um, for Durham. And they asked a lot of questions, um, and we went through the same budget document questions, uh, that we did tonight, so I can touch on that. Jason can next, meeting on the committee report, so. We're all good. All right. I'm good, A eleven. Um, board communications, professional development, um, the only thing I have, and I, I love having the student reporters, because I feel like we try to gather all the things that are happening and kind of, you know, spit them out. Um, but, uh, it's been incredible to s- see all the accomplishments that are going on in district. Uh, a lot of these sports teams have done phenomenal, um, come short of, you know, some state championships, but they are working really well together. It's been great to watch. I've seen so many of us like, at games, which has been awesome. Charlie Dallas, that, watching him win New England's in this, in the six hundred was absolutely phenomenal.
I talked to him, and I was going to.
We'll see him next month.
Yeah.
He needs to be invited.
Yeah.
The girls, and the girls basketball team needs to be invited as well.
And I, and I have to say, not to put on a spot, I know I sent it to a few people, but, um, the, the, the message that you sent him was, um, beyond appreciation. And he was so thankful that you cared enough to send him a personal message.
Oh, that's nice.
So I just wanted to know, it was, um, it meant a lot, and it's a true testament to the communication and, and empathy for our kids, and. I guess, um, great, he's going on a nationals, I think, this week, for New Balance, yeah. And, um.
Where is that?
I think, I want to say, Sydney, or.
New Balance, definitely.
Yeah, so, um, just so I'm clear, you want, um, Charlie at the, um, April meeting, but.
Girls basketball.
Girls basketball, is that?
They won the class S championship.
Yep.
So, thrilling.
Shrilling.
We should have won that one.
And that's, I mean, that doesn't work out for April, I don't know about meet schedules, I know that, uh, it sounds like Charlie's trying to do all three, um, if he can. So it's, it's, it's amazing, um, I have to say, that, that team has an incredible community and support, um. And, yeah, and it, it really does come from that, that community, like Mike Ford, um, Coach Cat, they're phenomenal, and. You know, there were some issues trying to get some transportation for, um, to be able to take the van out of state, and they were able to do it, and. Um, they were able to take some of the, the kids from the team to go and support Charlie, which I thought was phenomenal, and I, I. I think most would argue that he did as well as he did because he had support with him, so props to everyone who got that done. Yeah, besides that, I don't really have much else, um, like I said during finance, uh, Kim and I went to, uh, Day on the Hill up at. Legislative off, office building today, uh, talked to a few of the, uh, legislators that are working on the special legislation, um, you know, things look good there. Uh, should have some sort of answer first meeting in June, maybe a little bit earlier. Yeah, it's a great day. Well, if anyone has, has any communications, we've received, I think Tina touched on, we've had a lot of communications on the, um, the fourth grade math playlist. And we've been forwarding that to administration, and, um, I believe they've been communicating with the parents. And then we got a, another round, um, this week of, um, some concerns, very similar to the same concern, so we'll reforward those, um, and touch base at student achievement. Because it's just showing, you know, maybe we're not explaining enough, or either we're not explaining enough, or it's, it's not working for every child, um. But it'll, it'll be good to go through that. Bob, I know you've always got something going on.
Nope.
No.
Fine.
Unified prom is coming up, that, um, really interesting, and I know, um.
If you haven't ever been to Mr. Taggantog.
Well, that's Friday, yeah.
Friday, it's worth going if you want to have some fun.
Mr. Taggantog.
Well, that is so much fun.
What'd you say?
It's in fight the patriarchy. Some misogynistic, uh, activity, but.
And we did receive some communication and some, um, frustrated parents over the change of shorelines for outdoor to, um. Changing from the weekday to, um, the day of, it's the day after prom. Um, it seems the indication is that they've moved the time, um, and I, I, I think they're still pretty upset, um. So it's, it's, it's not easy, I know there's like different things that go into it and, and, and why that all happened, um.
I mean, there's so many districts involved, one district can't say, let's change it, it's like you have to then, it's, it's like this domino effect, so I can appreciate it. But the other problem is, that's what happens in a small district, right, when you have the same kids involved in everything, it is bound to happen.
Well, I, I think it goes along lines, what I'd like for us to look at is, we have worked really hard to make sure that we. Set a graduation date very far in advance so people can plan. Um, this decision made this close to the outdoor season when prom's already being planned, I think that's what the students are really. You know, if they could have planned a year out or nine months or something, you know.
But again, that's not up, it's up to C I U C.
No, I'm just saying from their perspective, you know, and we should.
Shoreline.
It's shorelines, yeah.
But it was on Wednesday, and that didn't conflict with anybody.
Right, well, it, on the Wednesday, it conflicts with the strong concert.
Oh.
Um, and so it, it, it's a, it's a parking issue, and, um, it's also an issue for the, uh, the other schools. And, and us too, with kids having to get out so early, uh, in the day in order to be able to maximize the light and, and, um, participate. So I, I thought that Todd came up with the best solution that, that would somehow help our kids in holding it. If we host it, then we can start a little bit later and give our kids more time between the prom. Instead of like, if it was at another, i- in another district, then they'd have to get up even earlier.
Which they do, there's another problem out there.
I beg your pardon?
There's another problem out there, I think it's North Branford's.
Yeah.
Oh, well, yeah, North Branford will have to get up earlier.
Yeah. Yeah. But, I mean, that's all I have, um, I don't know if anyone else has anything or to highlight anything. Nope. Okay. All right, uh, new business, um, these should be quick, um. The first one we are looking at is the agreement for child nutrition program, do you want to touch on that?
Oh, yeah, all this is, um, we need a motion to authorize, um, the interim superintendent. Uh, to be the first signature on our claims and, um, our helping move certification agreement. It's just a standard form that they need, um, a forward motion for.
So I make a motion to authorize interim superintendent Patricia Charles as the first authorized signer for the child nutrition program. Would you? Okay, I was like, wait, that way, exactly, you got me, hold on, okay, John and Jason, um, any discussion? All those in favor? I.
Thank you.
Good time.
We appreciate you. Um, okay, next one, uh, vote to award the RFQ P twenty twenty-five dash zero zero one to Q A and M architecture. Um, John Cross was on the meeting, um, he had to jump off for another meeting, but he had something from the billing committee he wanted me to read. Um, he said, following the state guidelines for this process, we had a great group of four architectural firms. Uh, the interviews and questions went very, questioning went very well. In the end, we had two firms, uh, that stood out. After good discussion and review of scores, which were very close, I referred to the cost proposal as a final decision criteria. Q A and M had a lower cost, based on all of our discussions, we, um, we recommend Q A and M, and I fully support this decision. Q A and M had a lower cost, based on all of our discussions, we, um, we recommend Q A and M, and I fully support this decision as well as the building committee. So with, with that, um, I don't know if you wanna touch me.
The building committee was unanimous on that selection and scoring as well.
And again, just to put it out there, so it's on the record, we have a tremendous amount of talent on that, uh, building committee that had a lot of insight, uh, expertise. So I, I truly believe that that decision and our project was important, good hands on.
I'd like to say, I think five references that we contacted before got back to us, and each one was better than the one before, outstanding, excellent, quality firm.
Yeah, it was, it was phenomenal to hear them and, and hear a little bit more from, from Rusty than we've heard, you know, a little bit more from Carson than we've heard before, and.
Every project on time, under, on or under budget, very minimal, uh, change orders, very interactive with the state, very well-known, the state OFS, like, perfect fit.
And they've done a lot to help Kim work on this, um, school construction grant and really be successful and, and how far we are moving forward with that, so. Uh, with that, I would. I lost it, hold on. Um, I make a motion to award, uh, oh, I need a motion to award the RFP number twenty twenty-five dash zero zero one, um, to Q A and M Architecture.
Move.
Second.
Bob and John, any discussion? Guess we chose none of that during discussion. All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Any opposed, any abstained? Fantastic. Motion passes. Um, Maura got off the call a little while ago, I'm not sure if she lost service. I noted when she, she got off. Uh, policy review, let's, let's do this one.
Let's move quick.
Do it.
This is the second read, and we need a vote at the end to adopt all of them. The first one was the bullying and save, save climate, school climate plan. It's a combination of cave, and, uh, we get some edits on it, and, uh, everybody met with that. The idea, I D E A, alternative assessments, we decided it was not appropriate to adopt it. Uh, this proposed by shipment, the notification to parents that write to no teacher professional, parent professional qualification, qualifications in the statute, we don't need to adopt that, so it's not getting adopted. The parent and family engagement policy is new, uh, the parental access to instructional material is also new by shipment, the promotion retention is also a revision of ours, and it's by shipment. And the school calendar is current, but we added a graduation date to it. So I would move that we adopt those changes.
We're moving to adopt A.
A, D, C, A, D, E, F, and G.
A, C, E, F, and G. Bob made the motion, do we have a second? Second by Linda. Um, any discussion on approving revisions, um, for A, D, E, F, and G? All those in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed, any abstained? Motion passed, number two, first read.
This first read, the activity funds management sixty-one forty-five point eight, we wanna recommend to keep it. The care of instructional equipment and materials sixty-one sixty-one point two, we wanna keep. Uh, we added a little bit of, uh, wording to that liner. Uh, class size, uh, C sixty-one one-three, we recommend to keep that as well. We deleted a sentence that was redundant. The curricular exemptions is new, uh, and it, it, it comes up with a new exemptions for parents who don't wanna have their kids take certain courses and uh, variety of subject areas. And it leads to this, uh, educational tours. We're proposing to delete that because it's covered under sixty-one fifty-three field trips, which is current, and we wanna keep that. Uh, and homework, uh, it was a short version by shipment, it was replace ours. And Dr. Charles is gonna add some AI, uh, references in the regulations. But they're not in the homework. The Honor Society, uh, sixty-one forty-five point six. Uh, basically revise the schedules so sophomores going into their junior year will get notified that they're eligible at the end of the, the year, juniors who, uh, right now, it says that if they, uh, get three point six six, uh, grade at the end of the first semester of their junior year, they can get inducted also in the fall, all of the following year. So hopefully we can get both sophomores and juniors who meet the qualifications into the same induction set session, and hopefully it'd be in the fall before we have, uh, kids submit their applications to college. So that was it, and participation in school-sponsored activities. Uh, we amended it a little bit to allow kids to bring dates to, uh, the prom. You know, dances with approval of the principal, except in middle school, we didn't allow that. Well, those are the policies that were, uh, through the policy committee, and should be on there for the first read.
Okay, sounds good. Bring those back, and I, I think, you know, to highlight just too, we went through the class sizes, we made no changes to the class sizes, um. The only, I think we took out the, the one sentence that was kind of redundant.
Yeah, it was a redundant one.
Yeah.
Tried to explain what the other words back.
I was talking about the max, yeah, with that one.
I don't recall, we have clarification about how kids are gonna be notified about the Honor Society, because a lot of kids don't know how that works.
Really?
Yeah.
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 Well, we've had a lot of amendments to the process discussion, but.
Well, yeah, but not about notification, um, I guess I just assumed that.
They're automatically, they're not notified, they should be notified that there is a national honor society and how they get into it, that should be in the handbook. I don't know if it is, or the handbook.
There's a lot of, a lot of changeover to, of advisors too, so I think what, what we're asking is just for a close eye on processing implementation on the process and notification.
And, and maybe something like at the beginning of the year that kind of motivates kids that are close to it.
Yeah.
Because there's a lot of kids, we do see this, again, we have a lot of smart kids, the ones that are more aligned there don't even think about it, and probably a lot of kids that are missing, missing out on National Honor Society, so I think it's something that we need to make sure that they're informed, let's just say that.
Believe the counselors notify the kids that make that, um, grade.
Yeah.
What about the ones that are close and how they can get there?
Yeah, I don't think everyone knows that it, they should know that it's there and that it's a possibility.
Just strive for it from the beginning.
But you get notified about it, it should be something that kids should be striving for, and if they don't know about it, which they should, but I mean.
And they probably would eventually, then they get to junior year or sophomore year.
I'm petty on this one, but there's been a couple of kids that I know that have been affected by it. Now, you know, it just.
Some are also affected by the other requirements, there's another, but other requirements about.
Right.
Community service.
Service, they've done a ton of community servicing, and then.
And it has to do.
Individuals that don't take certain community, I, it, it, I just wanna make sure that it's being done right, that's all.
It needs more attention, it doesn't give it.
It does.
And we did change the community service component so that it doesn't have to be.
In school.
Yeah, and then you have teachers that say that, I guess there's a component of it as, uh, as far as how they're, how they were involved in school, how they, uh, they're. How's that judge?
Yeah, we were concerned with the subjectivity part of it.
No, no, I, it probably isn't, I just want that, I just want that out there, I just wanna make sure that I, I want everybody that has a chance to get it, gets it, not because of you're, uh, good with a teacher or, you know, all that. Everybody that's eligible of getting it should get it, and.
Especially for the kids whose parents aren't involved and they don't.
And again, I, I don't wanna compare, but when you have a school nearby that has two hundred seniors and a hundred and seventy-seven of them are National Honor Society, and they have two hundred kids, let's just say here, and sixteen get it. I don't see how that is.
I think, I think we'll see a change in the component for the community service because there, I mean, that was taking, any Eagle Scout really couldn't do it, if they were doing that, I, I know.
Eagle Scout, exactly.
So. However, like, the, the recurring theme in the handbooks is that there are processes that should be in place that are not in place, not just for National Honor Society. Curriculum, and we're, we're right now repairing that, there is a description in the Orange County Regional High School handbook, what National Honor Society is, the timeline, and what's supposed to happen, but in terms of detail, like, knowing your freshman year, if you are gonna set your sights on this, something that you wanna do, what do I need to do without that?
Right.
Can't save all my previous hours for my senior year, I have to start working on it sooner because there are these things, right, so. Think that the clearer that is, the more comfortable that is, um.
Maybe morning announcements, have you started your community service for NHS or? Advisory?
Can make some, some ambassadors from the program already, reach out to.
With that, because there's a lot of kids that probably could have had it, didn't apply for it because of the process maybe, or whatever the kids were, so I'm just gonna leave it at that.
It needs to be hyped up a little more than.
It does, one hundred percent. I mean, just as important as athletics and music.
All right. Unless Drew wants to talk, there's no in-person public comment. Um, but if we have any online public comment, if you wanna raise your hand or unmute. Give you a second. Um, any online public comment? There's two, um, okay. All right, um, we will meet tomorrow night at six PM, um, six PM, everyone wanna repeat, let's go, six.
Yes, she did.
There we go, six PM, um. Yeah, of course, yes, um, Dr. Charles, before we make a motion, Dr. Charles has a comment.
Um, I was asking Stephanie, um, about the, um, comparative data that you were looking for, the assessment data. And she said that they don't have access, um, to it from other districts because those are benchmark assessments. But at the end of the year, when you have SATs and S back and NGSS, those, we would be able to have comparative with other districts, but, um, the benchmark, we don't have access.
Yeah, it's just, it, you have to be very specific of what you wanna, uh, grade.
Okay, um, motion to adjourn.
Second.
Those are tie, all right, second by Jason.
Third.
All those in favor?
Uh.
Hi, thank you all very much.
Thank you.